Jackson, do you be so kind to give us a prayer? Invitation, I would be of love.
Amen. Oh God, who art the source of all strength and power, help us as we seek to serve our community on this council. Here assemble in thy name and presence. Bring to our minds an awareness that in ourselves and of ourselves, we can do nothing. Give us a greater depth of understanding and trust in the power that thou didst show forth in Jesus Christ. The power is pure, uncorrupted goodness. And then give us courage to have faith in that power come what may. Knowing that as we give the best of ourselves to our fellow citizens, we make our offering to thee and to the extensions of that can. Bless our city, our citizens, and grant that in humility of heart, we may all look unto thee, our only Lord and King. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Councilwoman Jackson. To the citizens' request, Mr. Martin Chance, if you'd please come forward. In the name of the streets, buildings, bridges.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
I was in here about a year and a half ago, so I hope I have better luck this time. I'm here to remind the council that the Alabama Memorial Preservation Act of two thousand and seventeen is still in effect according to a rhythm by the Alabama's three forty twenty twenty. The law prohibits renaming the streets, buildings, parks, memorials, and the like, yet they've been renamed within forty years. Or if they're forty years old, you're not supposed to rename them. If it's ten years ago, you can, according to what I know of the law. To do so violates state laws and carries a stiff penalty. Birmingham's facing a stiff penalty now. It is my understanding that Jimmy Dunn advised the council of this act when the council considered renaming Lawrence Street a year, year and a half ago. The council now considers renaming Cole Street on the cheap tape. I have no issue with ordering cheap tape. A long time's service been made. If you ever build a public safety building, like was discussed thirty years ago, splash pad, build a new street, put up a new building, you know that I was cheap tape, I'll be there. Followed by their now meeting petitions to change the name of the Pettus Bridge. Mowing in the freedom foundation, Constance John Lewis, and the greatest eight of seven. But back to Cole Street, I understand the council has a fee of a thousand dollars for changing the name of streets, street signs, whatever. And now there's a proposal to waive that fee. And I ask the council, if we gonna have fees for renaming streets, buildings, using the secret building, then if we gonna have that fee, let's don't be waiting for it. Either you have it or you don't have it. Back to the Pettus Bridge. It's covered by the two thousand and seventeen act, and there's some discussion, you know, it's a federal bridge. But we don't have it. But there's a suggestion a couple weeks ago that we put signs up on it and everything else. But the law says you can't deface it, you can't change the name of it. If there's a monument up for somebody you don't like, you can't put plywood up around it to cover it up. And all I'm asking y'all to do is follow the law, and if there's a new building, a new something, we can name for certain tape, I mean, cheap tape, anybody else, hey, I'm all for it.
Are there any questions, comments, Councilwoman Thomas?
Yes, you just stated about under that act, did you say that Jimmy Dunn gave you, said that, what you just said?
I talked with Attorney Dunn, year, year and a half, two months ago, about two years ago. And I said, I'm not a lawyer about any stretch. So he went and read the law, and he told me, he concurred with me, I assumed that he told y'all. I don't know, I wasn't here.
Are there any other questions, Council?
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Chief, man, you got a report you'd like to give?
Ms. uh...
Ms. Wade?
Oh, we'll discuss it tomorrow.
Councilwoman.
I have a question for Chief, while you're here, I can mark this off my item. Chief, have we gotten an update on the county insurance? Have we got the main policies in place?
I haven't, I don't know. I haven't heard anything.
I did speak with someone from insurance, because the council was sure, I think you and I had the conversation, you had inquired about it. And what she did, what the personnel, Ellen said is that she forwarded all the information to Ms. Simmons in the mayor's office, and that she said that she would take it, she was checking to it. The cost is only additional four thousand dollars to our current policy. But she hadn't gotten any feedback as to how to move forward. She just needed a signature authorizing tag.
But listen, the deadline, our lease in sixteen, did we meet the deadline?
No, because we still don't have it.
Have they requested any personnel I have? That would need to qualify on that, the insurance background information, as far as having done anything with it, I don't know.
And how many persons did it?
Uh, roughly thirty-four, thirty-six, somewhere around there.
And so we're out of order to state law at this time?
I sent an email to council on fifteen.
You sent, sorry?
I sent an email to council on fifteen, about.
Because we had jeopardized that, because they had, they specifically said, these are the sixteen, and it's supposed to went into effect, I think the first of the year, January the first of the year.
And do we need to do a budget amendment, Ms. Wade, to include that in the budget, since there was additional costs?
Well, we've already have insurance covered, it's only four thousand. And until we never on the budget, uh, we never took out a budget for the late on workers.
Okay, so it's always.
We should be able to cover it.
But it would have been nice if you came before the council and you kept why I.
Yeah, to find out if they have anything in their bank.
Anything else, Chief?
My question is, don't they all, what's your?
Well, I get the, just, just, I know on October eighth, because that agenda, there was a care for for the fifty-six thousand for the advantage concrete contract. But I just wanted to get clarity, and so it could be clear to state for the record that whether or not that's an actual, because on doing his last year, but he didn't get an increase. What he did was did budget adjustments to make that happen. So it was not clear whether or not you out there approved an increase in his current year budget, or you approved the adjustment from those line items, I know it said care for, but I just wanted to make sure for the record that we have clarity on what that is, and that's allowed him to use, to increase his budget by the amount from last year.
Increase it.
So we could just put that on the same.
Yes.
How you doing, Chief? Now you have new officers, how close are we to fire station number five?
It's gonna take some time. Time is against us right now. As I stated early on, very first start of it, that public safety, I can be on explaining all that. It takes two years to build somebody into a position, you know, to get where they're going. There's promotional exams and things that have to happen in the department in order for me to hire more people in the department, so move forward, try to get that station open. So we're in the process right now with eligible personnel in the department to move the ladder, as they take the exam to move up.
So the time for when they take the exam and to move it up takes a process, will it be two years?
It's a two-year, there is a city ordinance.
And the workers, not the workers, the officers that were already there, where are they?
The.
From that station? The officers from that station that were there on regular basis, where, where they moved to a new station?
Uh, yes, they were put in areas where there were missing, so that the station could actually cover the area the way that it's set up now. If I didn't do that, then I wouldn't have enough personnel to try to hire to even keep the station open, you know? So I had to rearrange those individuals into other stations so that they could cover the holes that we've got in the department. So that's where we're at right now.
So they went to build some gaps someplace, in some other stations, they went to build some gaps. And so to put them back at Fire Station Five, instead of waiting to get processed, since they were already at Fire Station Number Five, to put them back there will bring you back to the gaps that you have at other stations, is what you're saying?
Till we could get some promotional exams done in the department, and it's gonna take a while, it's gonna take a while. You took a big hit in the department, it's a.
Was there a exodus?
I'd say if you had twenty, thirty people leaving on the past, in the past two years, yeah, I'd say it was something like an exodus.
And so probably you could get eight hired?
I've got eight hired, got two more positions that I can hire to, to stop the firefighter level. Uh, but if we don't do something soon about trying to get some pay to these guys, you know, I'm in the fear that these people are not gonna hang around for very long.
You pay meaning, they do understand the pay when they accept the job, is what you're saying? You're saying pay for the guys?
Well, we've got to bring our, we've got to bring our salary up to something competitive to keep these guys from leaving to go on other departments that are paying a lot more.
Yeah, I'm assuming new officers will come and accept the job, they understand that they know the history of the pay and all of those things, um, I think. I would, I would research myself.
Basically, it's like we're studying stone.
Yeah, I, I probably would. And so they, they have an understanding, they have a clear understanding of what they're stepping into, concerning that part right there. But my concern is, um, station five being closed right now, that's my concern, you know?
That is mine too. And, you know, like I said, I'm, I'm gonna do what I can to hire some people in here. Uh, and, you know, try to build this department back where it needs to be at, so we can have Station Five. That is my number one priority right now, to get that done. We also have to take into account, you know, in order to keep them here, we got to look at the pay.
I absolutely agree with you, and I absolutely still just secondly, when they're stepping into, especially if you're new, I'm sure they didn't research. I agree that we need to do our part on our end, and folks taking new knowledge, please do the research, so that we won't have to come back to this conversation, it's obvious, that part of the conversation, very, very obvious. But thank you for the work that you're putting on there. My final question is concerning the test that's supposed to be administered. What role does HR play in that?
Uh, what may you get? Can I do a follow-up before you come in?
Oh, sure.
Are we in compliance with the promotion of the test?
Thinking.
Are we in compliance?
Uh, I mean, there's, there's two things that you can look at. You can either look at your city being the one who administered the test, or you can have a consultant firm come in and administer those tests so that the city doesn't necessarily have to deal with the liability behind that. So, you know, you would want to, you know, deal with a consultant firm, you know? I would think that's right.
How, I mean, how have they been administering the pads?
Um, I know we used to have Diana Clark, that she was a consultant firm that came in and, you know, as far as. Yeah, somewhere around Auburn area. And, you know, we had to pay a certain amount of money for her to come in and to administer the test. Uh, as far as like the sergeant's exam, you would have a three-part test. Uh, you had a driver, hands-on driver test. You have a hands-on pumping test, and then you have a written test.
So we, did we include that in your budget, uh, what you said in your budget? Did you include the pay for the test inside of, for Ms. Diana, what's her name?
Diana Clark.
Did we, did we include that in, because we need, right, we do need.
With about seventy-five thousand, seventy-five to a hundred.
If you get, considering you get three, three positions, you look at anywhere from fourteen to twenty thousand if we dealt with her per exam, so. So you're around about sixty thousand, seventy thousand.
And you not include that in the minimum, right, for your present? I just want, I'm just taking notes for myself, because if we need to make an adjustment, that's a huge adjustment that we need to make. Oh, thank you, Chief. Thank you so much.
Councilwoman Jackson.
Initially, I only had two questions, but I can do that with a few more. Why, what would be the liability, why would we pay someone fifteen thousand dollars to administer a test? Um, is there any type of reciprocal agreement that you could have with another department? That they administer your test, and you administer their test, and everybody saves some money?
Uh, we get different departments that are, that are different from certifications, like the fire department and the police department, you don't want to have.
Oh, no, we're not talking about, you're saying departments as in, all of our city, I mean, all of their fire departments.
Well, yeah, we have assessors that come in, you know, and does the assessment part of the testing procedure. So, you know, it leaves the fire department out of the exam process. But, you know, that's why I say, you know, you keep the, you keep the fire department out of the exam process. You're trying to, um, you don't want to keep yourself from being in a liability situation.
Can you make sure that I'm understanding correctly, when you say keep yourself, see the fire department, are you saying that there may be a instance or a perception that someone has favored another party, and you hadn't delivered the test appropriately or correctly, that you favor one member of the fire department or the other? Okay, and so for that reason, we would pay someone fifteen thousand dollars? Fifteen to twenty, fourteen to twenty thousand dollars per test to come down, and?
It could be less than that, I'm just saying what Ms. Clark told me what she would charge.
What do we do in the police department? If someone comes down and administer their test, how much do they charge you? Let's look at seeing if we can prepare these prices, because I don't know why we would have a burden with another department that they, who work, their department that work without we administer the test. Um, the fire department is the fire department, is the fire department, all over state, fire colleges, fire college, everyone's on the same laws and required for the same thing. So I think that would be something that could be a cost savings, that's a lot of money to spend. Your staff, you, we're talking about turnover because of pay. Do you have an agreement like the police department, that if you've done all this training and they leave within a certain amount of time, that they're required the next department or the, the fighter is required to pay these funds back to the same cell?
Yeah, if we, if we send those to the fire college ourselves, and we, and the city pays the money out for them to go to school, then yes, we will have them sign a contract before they go to school and, and, you know, and hired.
And how long does that occur?
Two years.
Two years, and so if they leave within two years, they're required to pay that back? And so we'll, at least they're for two years, and we will get our money back? Also, I want to say thank you, Chief. I saw for the first time our fire investigators in court today. And I thought to myself, and I think to myself, I thought to myself, first again, at least that's something I've done. Well, um, police officers coming in, and I will be the fire investigators. And we got an opportunity to check with the one I had, because I had to go to clerk's office and, um, thank them. It was, we had three arson cases on the docket today, three separate arson cases, arson first, actually. And they were down there working, and I was like, wow, thank you, thank you, thank you so much.
They were.
Their first time, they may be aware, this is their first time being in court, and they were making sure they had all their paperwork together. Actually, they need to be there today, it was for arraignment, and I knew they were there here, but they were there, and they were ready to testify. So I wanted to tell you, thank you, since I saw you.
Appreciate it.
Also, a follow-up too, Chief. Could we possibly bring back a ex-HR person to administer the test?
That was the purpose of my question, my first question, my first question.
I'm not, I'm not talking about from around here.
I was thinking, did you say it was a driving test?
Yeah, well, this, well, the sergeant's, you know, sergeant's test, you got a lieutenant's test.
The instill.
Yeah, you got a lieutenant's test, it's a oral underwritten, and then the captain's test is a oral underwritten as well.
And when you say driving, they, they have to actually drive it?
By the fire truck.
Fire truck. And that HR person used to watch them drive the truck?
No, I don't know about the fire truck, they did, they remember.
What they do is have assessors come in and assess the testing procedures that's being done. So I guess I initially answered your question, is the consultant, like Ms. Clark, will they out there signing the bill in, ensuring that they're actually the person that they say they are? And then the proctors and things would be out there as well, advising the testing procedures, as well as the assessors viewing what's going on, and making sure they're actually doing what they're supposed to be doing, that they're gonna pass the test.
And you, you know, this, this one person, because we dealt with them in the past, could you call around and see if there are any more partners? Or maybe the price is tight, maybe it's low, but we, you got three positions, you say need to be?
Three, three different class, classifications.
Three different classifications, it's fifteen thousand dollars, you just, you're excited, what?
Maybe a little bit.
As far as I know, the, the mayor's office is working to, to do that process. I've spoken with consultant firms and, and, you know, the testing procedure and all that, so.
Or maybe it's come before council, because it's not good. And so, it's not in the budget, so.
It has.
Right. Thank you, Chief.
Yes, ma'am.
It is subjective, where, not subjective. Then I request Ms. Clark, for you.
I do, eighteen, how you doing?
Good.
Um, we had an incident, uh, they were burning fire with the copper in one of the residents, some of the older people, that, that smoke makes the people in the community sick, a lot of them have health problems. And the firefighters came out, and one of the elders were the one that called the fire department. Um, they're not supposed to tell who called them.
They are, who's they?
I'm saying the firefighters are not supposed to tell the resident who called the fire truck.
Um, I would say that they would not do that.
Well, the reason why I said it happened in, I think it was last week, prior, they had, someone was burning copper and stuff, and one of their older residents, they called the fire department, and when they went down and put it out, they told on the old lady, and she called me, so I went around there, and she was real upset because the people were, you know, mad with her, because she called the fire department, you know? So I did.
It's usually handled in a confidential manner, I, I wouldn't know where the firemen would know who called the nine-one-one dispatch.
Well, that's why I asked you, that's why I asked you. She, she did call, and they, the guys told the people that went, they went to put the fire out and told them if they do it again, they, she said the lady, the lady down the street, and then they, they started picking at her. So that's why I wanted to know. Uh, normally if you call a fire out in the community for the, put, put out, which we do, they burn a lot in our area, and that's the, it, it chokes a lot, it makes the people sick, it's too strong. And they, they got asked her about calling the fire department, so that's me now, you know, asking, you know, if they do, they called. Don't, don't let them do it to old people like that.
They may have said, they may have said, hey, someone in the neighborhood has called for the fire department to come out, but they don't specify who it is, the person it is.
Well, they came down and had the lady, and she was so highly upset, and I said, I can't believe that they would do that, and she was real mad, and they told her, you know, keep her mouth closed. And they, they were burning copper, you know, she told them they were messing with her health, you know? They just didn't ask me, so I just wanted to know, you know, when they called, most of them, there would be a call like that. Tell them, ask them, tell them.
And do you know what specific day it was happening on, I can get down to the bottom.
Well, it was, uh.
You can bring it up in the staff, and you tell them about it.
Yeah, just tell them, don't tell them to people, because they, they know the old lady, you know, and she's been scared ever since. So I just, she said, will you please talk to the chief or somebody? I said, well, if you come, I'll bring it up to him, and, you know, she's been on the edge ever since, so. I think it was, we both asked, they went on, it was on May, they went to put out, they were burning copper on the corner of May and Field, but. They've been after her ever since.
I hate that happened to her. Well, we'll make sure we address that issue with fire department.
Councilman. No, I definitely want to say, Chief, just retention of nothing new. And of course, irregardless of what agreement the fire, fire was signed, and saying that they were required to reverse the city for costs of going to the category. We do realize that two years has expired, if there's other opportunities in other cities, making almost twice, we could make another income. Just retention problem has to be stopped, if we're gonna be able to not have this problem down the line. And it's gonna be up to this council to see how this. Any other questions for Chief?
Thank you, Chief, thank you, Chief.
Appreciate you, ma'am.
Thank you. Chief.
You came in right on time.
That is everything, get a report if you'd like to get updates or anything. I know we have a contract that's pending.
What? Good evening to everybody.
Good evening.
One of the main things I'd like to talk about is, on last Monday, we hired an April certified officer, which I am excited about. And also, we interviewed, our board interviewed three that left us and want to come back. So we'll be doing some more interviews about returning officers, they're excited, and they want to come back, and we're excited for them.
Amen.
All right. Chief, can you help us with this, I know the council is assured, one of the best departments. So did the code enforcement work out with the police department? I hope we ship them back to the police department instead of.
Now, the last, before I get to pointing this position, the code enforcement was here at City Hall, and that's when Lieutenant Evans and Lieutenant Swanson was here.
I've been there more than ten over the police department, because they have April certification.
That's correct.
And they just subsequently make that transition.
Yes, sir.
Councilman. Chief, you know, there have been several citizens coming for us, uh, there's lost family members to murders, and there, and there are a number of murders that have not been solved. I think we had promised them that we're gonna ask our police department to develop a coordination. I don't know if that was mentioned to you, I just don't know, but that is one for us to consider. I do understand that, that you're just as sure hand as the fire department, for the same reason, that is, funds. However, these unsolved murders needs to be addressed, and I hope and pray that you can see a way to develop a co-ation. And maybe some retired detectives, who will come on a part-time basis and will not interfere with their retirement, uh, uh, monies, that is willing to work on these murders, we need to get some of these murders solved, Chief, so I hope and pray that you will consider that. Uh, President, I did advocate about code enforcement, I'm gonna be addressing to the council about this city declaring war on letters, this city do not deserve the mess and the crap that it is exposed to. And the people of this city need to do better time to take care of this city. And the only way I see this gonna happen is that the city is probably getting seriously out of control, who is indiscriminating on their life. And I mention this because Birmingham, Birmingham has done the same thing. I was aware of Selma wasn't immune to this problem, it's all over America, but we don't live all over America, we live in the city itself. And it's just heartbreaking to me, the city, filthy this, that, and constant out city, we didn't do it in Birmingham, though. And of course, this is how I'm at the Selma town, thank you, Selma town, uh, for me getting the copy and discovering this. And Alabama city has kicked off a new anti-literacy campaign. Birmingham Mayor Ronald Woodford launched his Don't Be a Dumpin' campaign. D U M, M Y stands for dumping ugliness in my yard. I don't have an acronym for Selma right now, but, the problem is, we need to get out of city enough. The Maryland people in various, in Birmingham communities are tired of illegal trash dumping. And the city very least, we are tired of the illegal trash dumping in our city. Put a pin in that, going out here on Shannon Street, it, it, it basically isn't a street, but it is an alley. I wish that we could post somebody that catch, it's just one person doing this. It is just downright displace the type of crap that they're dumping out in that, in that area. Let me read on, Woodford, a community leader in Birmingham, Bush is, they have launched the initiative to stop people. People are too comfortable dumping in our city, and the same thing is happening here. Whether they live here or bringing it to the city, we want to make something clear and simple for folks that gets illegal, Woodford said. Wood, Woodford wants residents to report any illegal dumping by calling three one one. Take video and pictures of people or their vehicles and go to the city's magistrate office and sign out and warn for their arrest. Here, the crackdown sounds good to one neighborhood leader, I'm very excited, we have to be involved. No one person can solve the problem, says Adrian Pearson. First time a fellow face a five hundred dollar fine, or second or subsequent offense, the fine will dump to one thousand. To say the very least, we've got to fix this mess in our city, Chief, and we're gonna, hoping this council will convene a committee to see how this is done, we're gonna ask our attorney to research Birmingham just to see how they implement this, and see what and how we can get this started in the city.
I spoke with, uh, Councilwoman Thomas a couple weeks back, and what I did was, I sent out an email to all chef supervisors. What I wanted to do, uh, to relay the message to the, uh, patrol that I'm controlling, if they see someone dumping, throwing trash out the window, they're, uh, to pull them over and give a citation, that way we can get them in court, so we can start that process, so we can kind of curtail some of that.
And that would be a big help, but I think, I think if the city would call press conference with the mayor and the president of the council, and serve, with the help of the, uh, radio, the news media, serving those of our city, that really, no one are gonna just sit back and do nothing about this. We're taking measures to make sure that our city just is free in other city, and this, and this indiscriminate dumping is not gonna be tolerated anymore.
Thank you, Counselor LaShaw.
Thank you, Mr. President. Yes, I did, thank you, Mr. President, um, that's why I asked, um, Counselor LaShaw that his item, I was glad to see somebody else wanting, wanting to talk about it in that fashion as well, uh, working between departments, so I, I thank you, Chief, that you already started to work on that, um, if there is, because in my mind, there is no reason why, if I'm riding around as a patrol person, and nothing else is going on around me, or anything else is going on, and I see this, why I cannot stop and address the issue when I see the issue, so thank you, uh, for thinking forward on that. I almost called you on the way here, I turned around, there was a, a vehicle at Mr. Rowan, where you and I live. Mr. Rowan, it's Sonacola, there's a huge pile that's gonna turn into a landfill after a while, there was a white vehicle there. I turned around, I was gonna address him, then I'm like, Gary, not the police? And then I looked down to see if I had my friend next to me, Robin, next to me, friend was not with me, so I, you know, I came to my good sense and came on to the council meeting, and, um, but there was a vehicle there removing stuff from their trunk, onto a pile that was already there, and I wanted to know from you, um, the relationship between us and these sites, like the gas stations and, and their cameras, will, will they, uh, make their, uh, cameras available to us? Since it's right there at their place, they should not want it there, especially if you're on Highland, these mangy drags, you shouldn't want your establishment to look like that, but this was at Mr. Rowan, uh, well, formerly known as Mr. Roy, uh, Sonacola, by Wells Fargo, and I know the bank is, is, is terribly, terribly, uh, upset about that, they should be, as a banking institution. But it's a huge, um, pile up there, and I wonder, uh, if the gas stations cooperate with the police department concerning, uh, the surveillance cameras, or not?
Yes, sir.
They do?
Yes, sir, they do work with us.
Okay, good, um, it's huge, when you go home, look at it for me, it's huge, 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 and so maybe he could pull the camera for you, because this is, this is right around coming to council meeting, so he can pinpoint the date, he can pinpoint the time. It was right when I was coming to council meeting today, there was a small white vehicle there, unloading at the, at that site right there, so thank you for that. Going back to the code case unit that, um, Counselor LaShaw brought up, I'm so glad that came back up too as well. In addition to the murders, um, hopefully, they're gonna be all, uh, code cases, like, you know, I have missing family member, but even well before my missing family members, I was on the park line with Miss Rose, Miss Rose is my neighbor, and her son went missing, long before my cousin went missing, her son went missing, and we, we, we beat the streets trying to find him, what he was. And Selma has quite a few missing people, uh, and we have not found them yet, and you know how knows a Selma is, we know everything, we know everybody, we're in everybody's business, and it just seems to me, uh, if we go backwards a little bit in time, that we'll turn up something, might not, we might not like, uh, who turns up being the villain. I might not like it, maybe I might not like it, others might not like it, but we, we need, uh, closure. Uh, like Counselor LaShaw said, we need closure for the families, we need closure for those families of the murder victims and the missing person, victim, you know. Hopefully, with the missing persons, they're somewhere alive, we don't know, we don't know, so, um, certainly include that if you will. And then finally, I wanted to talk about, um, the vehicles, I had a very brief conversation with you about vehicles, and I started talking about your vehicle, and how I could not believe that you were in the vehicle that you were in, and, um, are you able to radio out now?
Uh, we have, yeah, they, uh, both of them, um, and they've once installed a radio, my brother.
You are finally gonna get radio, and, okay, so, yes, so Chief will be in trouble, now he can radio out, he's in trouble. But, um, how, so I talked to him about his vehicle, about getting him a vehicle that was supposed to be regulations. Uh, the vehicle he described to me was more like a, a, um, a vehicle you would have at home, like a, a family vehicle. He even had a third row seat that he, and I was, and I, I asked Chief about that, he was like, no, that's not regulation, we don't need third rows. Things that he said to me about the vehicles were more commonly, uh, you and I would use at home, we had grandbabies and, and small children going to baseball games, those type of things, but as I was asking him about his vehicle, the chief said to me this, he said, I need to get my man and vehicles for him, and his concern were more about his, uh, officers of getting the vehicles, and I, and I'm hoping that we can work on both at the same time, but the chief's concern was about, uh, the officer's vehicles, and them having the vehicles and the equipment inside the vehicles that they're made. Uh, Chief, I don't know if the other stuff about your vehicle has been figured, what kind of vehicle is? The vehicle that you were describing to me had third row seats, no radio, no radio, and all of those kinds of things. It was not practical, it was not practical for Chief. And, uh, so, yeah, we, that's something else that we have to think about concerning our, as well. I don't know if we can turn that one back in and get what we're supposed, we, we need to get, I don't know how that works. Chief, have you given further thoughts, that you and I talked about it?
No, like I said, I'm focusing on the, uh, we have extra seven charges that are coming in, five of them have made it to Georgia to get out there, and hopefully we have it in the next couple of weeks.
Okay, so seven on the way total?
Correct.
Oh, good, 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 and that's for the officers?
Correct.
Whatever, call for Chief.
She's great, yes.
I thought it was more than that.
Seven, seven.
And what are we gonna do about you, of course?
Like I said.
How are we gonna get you what you need inside you?
With, um, like I said, we've already considered to be able to get the radio installed, we're just waiting to, um, hear back from. Yes, ma'am.
Counselor LaShaw, then Counselor LaShaw.
Yeah, um, Chief, the reason why I ask you that is because, uh, I've been a part of, uh, of this, all over the state of Alabama. We from Birmingham, Montgomery, everywhere, talking about keeping the cities clean, and what LaShaw just said, uh, Counselor LaShaw just spoke about, other cities have been involved in this, our city is just beginning to, uh, be connected with this, uh. Our city became to be, city of Selma has never been as litter and garbage, uh, that we see, uh, household garbage. And, and the reason why I ask you that, because, you know, they just passed, uh, the state about litter, Alabama litter, that anyone, any officer sees someone dumping out the car, because this is most of what we have, a lot of littering, that when you're driving out, whatever they eat, whatever they drink, they throw it out the car, they throw it out the car. And if you drive down, uh, anywhere, Broad Street, or up and down, or Summerfield, Chestnut Boulevard, back up in there, the main strip, you would see what people just really, whatever they eat, they throw out the car. And, uh, also, that we have a connection with, uh, like you just said, a lot of our officers, they'll be, they be a part of, uh, keeping Alabama clean, litter-free cities. And, uh, this is something that, uh, we have been working on, this'll be my third year, that, uh, that this city has not been in order, and been in ordinance to say, we're gonna make our city litter-free, that, where, that, uh, everybody, uh, takes a part in keeping the city clean, even in our residential neighborhood. And, uh, we had to, we had to draw up this resolution, and, uh, I was getting ready to do this, come February the second, we was gonna kick off, uh, a litter-free in our city, where everybody take part, everybody, different, different organizations will take part, and go into areas, and, uh, we're gonna give the tools to some of the people that want the, the garbage bags and pickup to the gloves, so they wanna keep their areas start going out into the community cleaning up, and we'd like for, um, some of our police officers to be a part of this event come the second weekend, February, because we wanna do a big kickoff on making our city be litter-free.
Was it February?
Uh, it's gonna be the second Saturday in February.
February fifteenth. February fifteenth.
Second Saturday, we wanted to do it as a first, we're gonna start that morning, uh, uh, probably about, uh, I said, if people don't Saturday, people don't, some people get up early, so I say we'll start about eight, eight o'clock. And we wanted, uh, to start our kickoff right here in downtown, in front of City Hall, where we wanna get, uh, our young people involved, different organizations be a part of this kickoff.
Counselor LaShaw.
Uh, Chief, the vehicle that Counselor, no, no, I'm sorry, Counselor Woman Benjamin described, is that a new Ford Explorer?
Twenty eighteen.
Twenty eighteen, yes. When did we receive that vehicle, purchase that vehicle, lease that vehicle?
Uh, we got that vehicle last year.
Last year?
Correct.
Under Colly's administration?
Yes.
And so, we purchased a vehicle that was a general population vehicle that was outfitted for, um, your family or mine, is that right?
Correct.
Probably they get passed, I guess, Colly's just.
He told us, he told us what was gonna be in the vehicle, and then once, once they give him approval, the police chief set specs as to what is ordered.
And so he just changed the specs after he told us what he was gonna purchase? Apparently.
Counselor LaShaw.
Yes, Chief, I want to ask you a question, have all of the weapons that, uh, the officer had, uh, any other citizen or department, people that have worked here for the city, have, have, have the weapons been turned back in yet to you?
What I've done, uh, since I've taken over, the first thing I always do is inventory, so I'm waiting on the inventory to come back, so I can know exactly what's, what's weapon.
Thank you.
About the latest contract with, uh, Miami?
I have not heard from Rossy yet.
Any other questions for the chief?
Did you need anything from us? All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I, to the business, uh, uh, Counselor Nicole, uh, I've had to flip it tonight, but I was typing up the copy, uh, letting you look at it, try to the next council.
You still typing?
Huh?
You still typing?
Yeah.
Somebody out there?
Yeah, I was just typing this, I mean, I just wrote it out.
You got a lady out there?
Yeah. I might have to pay her assets, pick them up, bring them in my hand. Also, uh, this is number two, I think Counselor's very important that, we look at someone to amend our personnel manual, I think the last time it was amended was twenty fifteen, and you know, personnel manual, you gotta be in compliance with state laws and federal laws. And, that personnel manual has been a downfall for, for us in these lawsuits. So, uh, let someone look, look at it, to adhere it, and I'm probably writing before the council to see, could we contract another looking to, let's say, um, help us amend that personnel manual, because they have amended personnel manuals during internal municipalities. So, and I know it's a recommendation from, uh, our attorney, also say that we definitely need to, um, come in compliance with it, because most lawsuits occur if, you know, if you're not following the personnel manual. And if it's a direct, like a dude, uh, uh, the council not following our personnel manual, and if the council don't do our due diligence, it could be some black carry liability on our behalf, you know, not moving forward with it, and, go ahead.
Are they able to sit this, commit policy that you feel need to be amended, that you can share with us?
Yeah, uh, promotion of.
I, I mean, not, you're just.
Okay, yeah, yeah, I will, I put it right, yes, and far as with the, uh, financial procedures, I know we have some in place, and, uh, we would be calling financial, not just deal with the budget, amendment of the budget, uh, I, I first meeting in February, uh, I can do that then.
After the break?
Yeah. And all, my next argument is census twenty twenty, I met several radio stations to see if we can do some public service announcements with the council members, encouraging, uh, the citizens to take part in the twenty twenty six census. We have had several radio stations, I did, need to check more and more, one of the radio stations, they have agreed to allow council members to come on and cut up public service announcements, encouraging, uh, the citizens to take part in it. And my last argument, upcoming events down the time, uh, I will be getting both of, um, to manage to develop a department, to see, do they have any, any money available to, uh, help us with the projects down, polish, you know, some pressure washing, uh. help us with the projects down, polish, you know, some pressure washing, uh, streets down there. And also maybe, uh, doing the lines and the streets, kind of, but you believe, make some quarter parts that I seen, um, uh, I can't remember what city it was, but they can tie it into the sewer, not sewer system. They can just be kept downtown and we can have someone doing a couple of works to clean them. So that will give us access to bathrooms downtown. Councilwoman Thomas and Councilwoman Jackson?
Well, I like what you just said about, uh, coming up for February for Jubilee. You know, I have, uh, you know how I am about, uh, verification of keeping the areas. Uh, um, we started our process of doing this in our city. But right now, um, they put a holdback. But I noticed that, uh, no one has started doing any verification on these back streets. I, I noticed no one has started doing any work on the, you know, the rest of the area downtown. A lot of things, we need to remove, a lot of these dead, uh, overgrown weeds on our street corners. If, uh, we got people coming in, uh, here, coming in the city, even tourists every day. We have busloads coming here every Saturday, uh, students from everywhere. And they walk, they walk, uh, our city. And, uh, it, it embarrasses me to keep letting, uh, you know, I'm a driver when it comes to doing something. When I started, I wanted like to finish it up. And I see, um, we have waited and no one has, has, has beginning to, uh, work on it. So what are, what are we gonna, we need to get that done. From, uh, the areas where all the overgrown weeds are dead and, uh, on the sidewalks where, um, like some, in front of some of the business on our back area. Cause a whole part of this is, is the part of City of Salem. So I'm asking you, um, we've been waiting, you know, you sit back and wait and see. So I'm gonna see if anyone's gonna do anything by first of, uh, we need to get our city cleaned up.
So how many employees have been hired downtown, brought back?
Only seventeen. Seventeen and, and, and a couple of, uh, new, uh, new employees. So, you know, you got the number, yeah, we had only seventeen employees have been brought back. That was my, that was, was my main concern as a, of a day-to-day operational work that we need done in, in, in our, in our wards. And, uh, we got seventeen employees added on to the ones that they have here now. We had approximately over fifty-nine employees laid off.
Seventeen, for that work?
Seventeen.
Seventeen?
Yes. We have seventeen people, they are not all the old employees brought back. There are new people brought in, new people have, have been hired in places. Yes, seventeen. Cause some of them haven't even met the payroll yet, they, they, they just got, some of them just got in. So we have only seventeen were brought back that he has hired, plus who you got here now. But we have maybe what fifty, fifty-nine, fifty-nine to sixty employees laid off and, and only seventeen been called back. Because if you're out in the daytime, day-to-day operation is not being done. This is why we still have to keep getting this guy. Mm-hmm. This is why we still have to keep contracting to get the, our, keep our community, uh, clean that we represent. And, uh, worry about trying to get somebody in there where other people from the outside bringing household garbage in, that's trying to make tons of mountain of garbage in, in, in our wards in certain areas. And I would, and I promised the citizens that I live in Salem and in my ward, I'm not gonna let, that's a health question. I'm not gonna let, uh, garbage bill up like that in Ward seven.
Well, I know probably Councilwoman Jackson, I know that's a day-to-day operation, but I hope they, uh, de-verify these employees that they're running back, doing background checks. But that's probably day-to-day operations.
Yes, day-to-day operations. Hmm, yes.
I just wanted to make the council aware, um, as it relates to upcoming events, I may have mentioned this back in November. Uh, the council asked that I was going to contact the, um, Jubilee Committee, set up a meeting and begin watching that out. Um, I contacted the president, her team back in November. After I got a date from Mr. Walker and he informed me that we could meet, I think it was a Monday afternoon at five. He was gonna meet with the mayor the next morning at nine. Um, the purpose of this, uh, this meeting was done several years ago. And Councilman Randolph asked if we do a resolution that we work together because the mayor wasn't speaking, uh, with the Jubilee Committee. Seeing as though the mayor was speaking with the Jubilee Committee, I wasn't going to waste my time to have a meeting, for him to have a meeting, for them to come back with something different. And so I asked them to please meet with the mayor and the mayor, um, along with, uh, the committee bring, um, their recommendations to the council and you all approve them at, at that time. So I made you all aware of it, of the members that were on the committee, but I wanted to let the entire council know, um, this present, why I did not complete that task. I would, I just wasn't gonna waste my time.
Thank you. Also, uh, that, um, meaning that we will have to reduce the budget, the budget will be February the eighteenth.
Eighteenth.
That's Tuesday at five o'clock.
February eighteenth.
Councilman LaShaw, your business line, sir? Your business line?
Oh, yeah. I think I'm fired, take care of. Number six, I heard it's a chance to locate what the current Alabama law is. I am aware that apparently that law don't apply to Salem because there was a street name that was changed about a year ago, uh, to Terry Jackson. Didn't, didn't this council authorize a street name to honor Terry Jackson?
You said Terry Jackson?
Yeah, that's a street name changed until the eighth, Councilman Johnson brought to this council.
I don't think he voted on it.
No, we didn't.
He brought it forth, but.
We see.
I don't know, I, I remember.
I think, I think, Council, you did vote on it.
We, we could, we could add here, check, check.
Uh, but anyway, uh, this, this street name is just gonna be recognized in a long-time distinguished public servant of City of Salem, Ernest L. Tate, who was the first back Salem Police Chief in City of Salem. His, uh, tenure of thirty-four years, uh, to the City of Salem, uh, is being recognized by his neighbors who built from Cold Street. They signed a petition, uh, supported that initiative of renaming Cold Street to Ernest L. Tate. Now, who Cold Street renamed, I don't know, I don't, I just don't know. Just, I'm sure it named after somebody. What contribution? How it's been made to the city or that is kinda, I just don't know. And that is not a put-down. But this is something that I feel this is, uh, council needs to approve, uh, on tomorrow. We will have a public hearing in February, giving an opportunity for those citizens only who lives on that street. There will be no, uh, comments made by anybody who don't live on Cold Street in, in opposition or in support of this, uh, street name change. So I would be asking the council to go to, uh, rename Cold Street Ernest L. Tate Street by commissioning Salem Police, African-American Police Chief, serve the City of Salem thirty-four years.
Thank you, Father Johnson. Councilwoman?
I wanna ask this question. I wanna be on the, uh, cause I, I just wanna ask this. I, I've listened to you, Councilwoman LaShaw, the last meeting where you said that, uh, it costs a thousand dollars to rename this street. And, uh, you made a recommendation that you use your oilies funding to, to, uh, you're asking the council to use all these funds to, to put, to use this to put for the thousand dollars to rename the street after the person. Isn't that something of a conflict of interest in that? Because it says that on the, from what I have been reading about the oilies funding, this is something that, that, uh, citizen wants to rename this, this, the, the street after this person. And, but our oilies, uh, funds are used to, uh, for strictly, uh, like we do replace our street signs and for our infrastructure of, of the streets. Is it, is it, is it, I'm just saying, I just wanna be on the right page. It was telling in the writing, tell us how it's supposed to be used.
You sure can.
And I need for me, Councilman, I was having a phone to council that brought this policy to fruition. To my understanding, that a thousand dollars is not for the name of the street, but for the cost of replacing new street signs.
You're right.
Some streets will require more sign than others. An example, Jail Chestnut Street, that's a long, elongated street will require multiple street, uh, signs. Cold Street only requires two. So rather than asking the family of the, of the text to, uh, add up a thousand dollars, uh, the council chose to waive that and I would pay for it out of the oilies. And oilies is a reasonable and is a legal cost because it deals with brick and mortar. So that is a legal charge to that street. I think there will be a, a street name on the corner of the memory and Cold and on Ethrich and Cold. So it just will require two street signs to be changed. So a thousand dollars was, was set in place for a massive street signs for elongated streets. And the fact that we're not gonna be asking the text to end up a thousand dollars, then I chose to pay for it out of my oilies. Am I correct?
Yeah, you know, Councilwoman Jackson?
Councilwoman LaShaw, this is no way, in no way in opposition to the great work that, um, Chief Tate has done, however, since they've been brought to our attention, that there may be a law preventing us from doing it. I would respectfully ask that, uh, Attorney, um, Attorney Madison, look into the map that was brought before by, um, because that's something determined by vote. If it's something that we can legally do or if it's not. And so, um, if we can have the law on the map and, um, his interpretation brought back before the council. So any move that we do, that we provide is in legal standing.
Councilwoman Thomas, can you help us out with this lawsuit, just because?
Yeah, I, that's why I was, you know, and I.
Where did you find it?
I have something, uh, where I was recently, oh, she told me that law.
No.
I have something that we have and that we have given to us.
Okay.
And, uh, about, uh, how we use our oilies. And that's why I was asking, I was asking you my question. Uh, it was to me like a conflict of interest to waive it said it. And then when I hear my colleague say that he could take his, his oily, but I, I didn't hear him at the time saying taking his. I thought that we agree, the last council meeting, that each council had agreed to give.
Yeah, certain one.
Yeah, yeah, certain one. That's, I was present when they said. So, and I said, I don't have any oils. So my thing is this here, when I went back and start reading, so that's why I wanted to make sure that. I, I don't have that.
Ideas that you have.
Uh, uh, I would get it, I have it. And that's why I wanted to say to you, we, is it, is it, is it a conflict of interest? According to the way they say we're supposed to use our oilies.
There are several ways, okay.
That's why, that's why I wanted to know.
Let me just say this for all of us who are listening.
Okay.
Uh, and for the attorney as well, because he's, he, he, uh, is probably jumping into a frying pan. And I was asking you that so it would help him if you had it with.
I have it.
It would help him move as efficiently, because I think this, this is coming back up tomorrow.
I'll be joining him on.
Oilies, uh, there are exceptions to a lot of things that we read and you have to read all the way down to the exceptions and all of those things. So, uh, oilies can be used in various ways for permanent structures, brick and mortar. Uh, and there is even, uh, a clause in there when something comes up concerning a matter of public emergency. So we have to read it all and I was wanting to be brought with you.
Oh, yeah, I read it all, but that's why I was having a, a conflict of interest on the way it's said. It, the way it's said for us to use.
Okay.
So that's why I wanted to know. I didn't wanna go out like, do I do it? Uh, uh, do we, are we on the right way of using it?
Okay. I was, I was gonna ask you to pass that to the attorney if you had it, but.
It's in my car.
Cause he got a lot to work on.
Okay.
But, uh, if you could give it to him, Councilwoman, Councilwoman, jump off, jump off. LaShaw, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I guess one last point is, oilies haven't used for street signs. Uh, then and now, so there's nothing different from me using my oilies to erect street signs, uh, for the name change from Cold Street to Ernest L. Tate. And of course, some of my colleagues was viciously and was willingly to help me out with that cost and I thank them for that. But there was no, and there was no, and there was nothing that was demanding any of my colleagues to end up in that oilies. And I, you know, and I, and I just wanna make it clear that the thousand dollars that ordinarily would be asked is a charge that would be required for massive street signs, uh, street name change. But because of the shortness of the street and it required only two, two signs, then I chose to use oilies out of my oilies account for those two street signs. And my colleagues are richly, uh, richly helping with it.
Right, and Councilman, you're, you're saying that if this passes, you still gotta get the street signs regardless?
Absolutely.
Okay, um, he disappeared on me. All right, I was gonna, uh, say one more thing to the, he, he's, oh, he's still here, okay. I'll ask him when he comes back. And, and so while we wait, I was gonna go to the attorney's report because we skipped the attorney's report because I think he had to leave out to go do something. He is at the top of our agenda. So while we wait though, I'm gonna go to item number, uh.
Were you finished, Councilwoman?
Oh, yeah, cause you asked him to research the management. I know for a fact.
Oh, he didn't know.
There was a street name changed by this council within the last year.
Research means on that one?
And underneath seven, that, that name change was made.
Okay, and so while we wait, we're gonna go to the number, uh, and I have the number seven. Councilwoman Jackson, um, funding year two thousand eighteen financial audit update?
Yes, ma'am. I'm gonna be really, uh, brief on this and all of that because I do have another, um, engagement and I'm gonna be here to listen to as much of this tonight as possible. So the financial update, uh, audit update, I've been in talks and I'm getting a lot more information, um, regarding this and I see that you all are open to the emails as well. And so we should, um, have something, um, come to fruition, um, in the coming weeks, no more than a month, hopefully. Um, we should have that and we actually got a draft. And so I took time, um, yesterday to review those ninety-eight pages of that draft and the other five, um, documents that were sent along with it. So I digested all that. I'll bring it back at the next meeting. Before you stadium, I wish, uh, Councilman Johnson was here because, um, the track. Um, I spoke to Mr. Jackson at, prior to the last meeting. And he informed me, or I spoke to Councilman Johnson, he informed me to speak to Councilman, uh, I mean, Mr. Jackson, Mr. Jackson informed me that he spoke with someone about completing the work on the track. He could not, or the name he gave me, he did not know the name of the company. The name he gave me, um, he did not know the correct spelling of the name. I could not Google it. I could not find anyone. And so I've started, um, trying to determine, um, if we could find someone ourselves to try to, um, get the track in a, um, condition, probable condition for the children to be able to do track next this year. I'm hearing that, um, Selma High continues to want to move forward. But Mr., um, Jackson informed me that no one could use the track because of the liability it would impose. Um, I know Mr., uh, Councilman Johnson stated that we should just waive liability. But I've been informed by insurance period that we waive liability every time they come on. But if the track is actually in a unsafe condition, then we don't waive liability because we know that it's in an unsafe condition. So I'm trying to work, um, I actually got a message on my phone in, in court today, um, from a gentleman that text message, um, need to give him a call back, um, out of Atlanta. I spoke to someone out of South Carolina and, um, two or three other, um, individuals around the state of Alabama, um, trying to get this done. So I just know that I'm, I'm trying to work on that and then. So I just know that I'm, I'm trying to work on it as a member of the Recreation Committee under my chair, um, Michael Johnson. This is my main item tonight, I've asked.
Oh, before you go to your next item, okay, and then I'm gonna get Councilwoman Jackson to ask a question as well. Um, you said that the conditions are unsafe, uh, who deemed it unsafe? Do we have any documentation or experts saying this?
This one, it's what Mr. Jackson has informed me, that the gentleman that came out to inspect, which he doesn't have a name for, doesn't have the quote for. Um, any information on, um, that he could give to me has told him that it's, it's unsafe and that it needs to be replaced. And his actual words were the probable condition.
Will you please ask him to give the inspector's report to us, please, so this won't be word of mouth? I mean, I could go out there and say it's unsafe.
And that, and that's why I called, that's why I called, you know, he's, maybe we should ask him to come in and speak. He's the, the person that's the head or assistant head if we don't.
Well, we know he's not coming.
You know, well, he actually spoke to me about the matter, uh, because I was, I was getting, I received several calls about whether they would be allowed to play and I didn't, I hadn't heard anything about. I'd heard that the track was bad or good, so our first person I called was Councilman Johnson. And he stated that he, he was in fact aware that the conditions were not safe and that they had been in contact with someone and they were trying to get a quote. And so he said, they didn't have a ticket, call Pee Wee and he gave me a call. Called Pee Wee and I wasn't able to get any, and those are all the questions I asked. Can I have a copy of that quote, or do you have their card? Let me give them a call and see if they put this in writing and so.
Yeah, we'll have to move on around, I know my, my son goes to the track, which is why I asked you then about, I said, he goes to the track and he helps the distance runners from Selah High, uh, condition themselves for outdoor training. And I'm assuming he would've said that, but, but teenagers don't talk to their moms all the time. But did you happen to ask, um, our administrative assistant, who, who the, uh, vendor was? Because she took care of those matters out there, uh, for the track. Uh, she could probably tell you bouncing off the top of her head.
Okay, so she come back in.
Who the vendor was, uh, for that and then Selah High and stuff.
Because I got from his way that it was last replaced in two thousand nine. Uh, but it was also because I was trying to get, uh, a grant, which we could've had, um, that was due by December the thirty-first. Um, but we couldn't get any of this information from Mr. Jackson or Councilman Johnson.
And you still cannot.
And right, and so that's why I've taken it upon myself to do it myself and call and try to find vendors, um, as far as South Carolina.
Thank you, in two thousand nine, it should've been still more, it just seems like, Councilwoman.
I did get that much information that they last about ten years.
I'm going back to the financial audit, uh, Ms. Wade, maybe you can ask this for me?
Yes, sir.
I read the email from Andrew Waits, the CPA that's working on the audit.
Sure.
Uh, in the communication, I get the feeling that there's some documents that they are gonna need from certain people that they don't have. Am I on point with that?
Um, yes, enough. They were awaiting some information from the attorney at the beginning of last week, but they since received that, um, there is some information that they want the management to review and approve. And as I stated earlier, I'm, I'm comfortable with signing down files, it's not because I didn't understand what, how the, I, I understood the information that was provided. I'm concerned that I was out a majority of, a good, not majority, but a large portion or a significant a portion. And I'm not comfortable with, um, the document information that was inputted in the system. And so for me to take the responsibility of saying that, um, I could verify that information's after name complete makes me clearly uncomfortable. And so I'm deferring this to my attorney before I sign off on those documents. I did ask the auditor who did those in the past year, actually the past two years, because as you recall, I was being placed out of the audit as I completed the information to provide to the audit and I facilitated it being completed. And when I, um, spoke with him, he indicated that it was signed off by the mayor, the accounting manager, Ms. Oliver, and Harry Thompson verified this information. So what I requested to him verbally, as I stated to him on more than one occasion, I was uncomfortable with this information. I requested that he have a conversation back with the mayor and that they go back in that direction. Uh, because they know the information that was inputted in the system in my absence. This is not the first time that it, the audit got completed and signed off with by the mayor and, um, whoever else he assigned. Uh, so this is actually the second time. So my, my request to him was to have a conversation with the mayor, explain my level of uncomfortableness and also allow me an opportunity to speak to my attorney about signing off on some stuff that I know that has not been, um, ac- actually correct in the process.
So until you get back from your attorney, the audit process?
No, not until, because the mayor can often move forward as he has in the past for the past few times. So not until, because my attorney may very well say, don't sign off on it, so I'm just waiting to hear back from him.
But are they able to move forward?
Yeah, yes, and I, and actually when I spoke with the auditor, he said it may change their opinion about, because I will elect not to do so, but they can still move forward, so this is not an end all be all.
Yeah, but they missed it.
And, and as you recall, when I first got back, I was told that the audit was what, eighty-five percent complete? We found out that was inaccurate because every time I give them something and think we're at, at a point of being completely requested for some more information and they said, okay, we're almost complete then. And I've, I've worked in the accounting industry a long time, I understand how audit goes. They start on one project, work over another project, and then this project get delayed. So when you don't provide them with the information, they have to still make money, go into other, and go and work for other companies that they have. And as Andrew explained that, he said, good reason why they couldn't complete it because they weren't able to get all the information in my absence. So when I came back, I worked diligently to get them what I can, what they requested. But then we come back and it was the same problem, as you recall, they waited for extensive long time saying that they needed a survey from you guys that you all usually have never done before, but you all had indicated them early on that who all was gonna send it in, send it in. But they still waited a couple of months thereafter. So it's not all that this is the only reason, there have been delays also from the accounting, the audit firm as well, okay?
That, that explains a lot, so I was, I read it, I said, well, may I need to get some clarification of what I'm reading? And I thank you for that, thank you for that.
Okay, also, and before I go to Councilwoman Jackson and return the gap to Mr. President, I, in the email that you, I think I, I read what you read, um, as well, they, they, Andrew was saying that he needed an, an instrument, maybe three instruments, from the financial person, the mayor, and planning and development. And in that, in that he said, um, there could be a clear opinion or there could be something else in the route that we don't want to take. And I think that he was trying to urge you to, uh, do your part of the instrument, saying that, saying something to the effect that, uh, to the best of my knowledge, or something like that, um, I haven't read the email, uh, again today. But something to the effect of, to the best of my knowledge, because you had expressed to them, you were absent.
Right.
I don't know what happened when I was absent, um, in my opinion, and I'm not an expert all in y'all business, but, uh, why didn't they go find Jerry? But anyway, uh, the interpretation of that was that, uh, they were stalled. I got the impression from Andrew in the email that they were stalled and they would not move without the instrument. And then he cited a law, uh, audit law, I don't know if it's state law, whatever, I don't know what law it was. But he cited a law that we could go to in reference and thank y'all for including us on the email, whoever that was adding us to the email, we need to be in on this stuff.
Yeah.
But, um, there was something that he cited, so it is a law. So they certified, the American Institute of Certified Public Accountants established a professional sta- so standards. So he cited that standard that we can go find now, I didn't go, I didn't go look that up because my interpretation was, uh, when he finished the conversation with you in the email, he was saying, I'm just gonna be stalled right here until you all, uh, do this.
You're absolutely right, and that was his perception. And the reality of the law is that on both occasions, for the twenty seventeen audit and for this audit, I still was operating, I was still in the capacity as treasurer, even though I was on administrative leave. So they were not stalled on, on the first occasion, so why now? Um, um, the accounting manager served the work of the mayor in terms of this, so I'm trying to find out what would be different. It's the same, the same rule should apply. This, they, the twenty seventeen audit was completed, as you were aware, I, I was still in a position of treasury, although I was on administrative leave. So, um, I'm just, I'm uncomfortable with that and I wouldn't put myself in a precarious situation to say that I acknowledge everything when I don't feel that way. And there have been, uh, situations to support that there may be something other than what should, should've been happening, happening here. So I just wanna make sure that I'm, um, and like I told him, I, I would be willing to give a letter attached with the alternative stating what I'm stating to you guys, as well as moving forward with that management, I'm not opposed to.
It's acceptable, so.
Right, so.
Will you clear that whatever as soon as I hit with this?
Right, a- and, cause nobody wants a better audit report than I, because I know that that, as well as other things affect our bond rating. And in the next couple of years, we're gonna need to look at either refunding or issuing funds, uh, so we don't have to make these balloon payments that'll be coming up in the next couple of years. Those are things that we need to consider and start talking about, having conversations now. Because in the next few years, um, things are gonna happen and we wanna be able to refund the bond or the fees of bond to reissue another one to cover, um, to avoid those balloon payments.
I got one more question. Is there anything in his correspondence that will get him given an unmodified opinion?
I, I don't, I don't think so. Do, I mean, that would be a question directed for him, but we've had that conversation. This is not the first time Andrew, the head auditor, has heard, had the conversation, uh, with me about what I felt and what was going on. Um, and I guess my assumption was I still was in the, I, um, I wasn't physically here, but I still operated in a position as treasurer and still managed to complete the audit, so what would be the issue?
Councilwoman Jackson, Mr. President is next, and Councilwoman Thomas has her hand.
Okay.
May I have your name?
Madam Treasurer, I, I was going to, um, you know, deal with this issue on tonight, but since we opened it up. Um, so I've, I've been communicating with, um, Andrew throughout the year. And as of late, um, other council members have asked, and then the president asked on Friday, that we include all council members. Um, and the reason why I think communicating with them all year is because I've been talking about finances all year, so I wanted to understand. And what I don't understand is where the breakdown comes. You were not here most of the year. We have fifty-one findings, fifty-one errors in our small sample that changed, that changed our bottom line about a million dollars.
No, we didn't have fifty-one findings, we had like four, four finds.
We had fifty-one journal entry errors, eight pages long.
No, adjusting journals, those are, that happens every year, they're not errors.
They're, they're misstatements.
They're, they're, no.
When he stated, explained to me this afternoon when I spoke to him directly, what they were journal entries. So there were errors either on the front end or the back end, but it wasn't done correctly. So whether in overall it's an error or not, they were, they had to make adjustments on fifty-one things, is that right?
That's what we, that's what every, it, since I've been here and, and this conversation I had. As you recall, I'm out every, close to the e- close to every year, I'm out. And when the, but prior to this auditor coming aboard, and they have been doing it years before, the other auditor has making adjusted journal entries, which is, and there's, there's, there are accruals, adjustment accruals. So I don't know if he's used the term, I, I, I'm not questioning you, but I don't know if he used the term errors.
Yeah, when he said when they were material mistakes, if they're, what is it?
They can become material statements if they're not journalized and properly adjusted. And, and what he has been doing, and is even in my absence, has been doing those adjustments.
Right.
This, and I hate when people take an accounting term.
Will you, will you let me finish?
I, I get what you're saying, but I'm on.
You can finish, allow me to finish my question.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay, so my question was, this year we had fifty-one in your absence.
Right.
What procedures are in place that your people in your absence know what to do? Because you weren't entering these journal entries that ended up, someone else had to enter and make sure the money balance got, you weren't here. And to the tune of five hundred thousand dollar surplus and a six hundred thousand dollar negative, you were not here. So what happened with your people and their training that they, or is it a lack of training? Or is it they were under distress and did not do things the right way in your absence?
Okay, cause see, I have a two-part answer to that.
And could you also finish your statement when you finish answering our question?
No, and that's why I'm going back to the statement, I have two parts to that. Because I've talked to Andrew and we do have the li- the list of journals and we do adjustments every year. It was not presented to me as a material misstatement, it was adjusting journal entries that's supposed to happen every year, a year in. Okay, so, no, yes, this is, now, what you're talking about and what I've had a conversation, it doesn't, it doesn't align. So, so what you're saying, and I think that this is gonna be a great, uh, point of conversation when the auditors come here. So there can be some clarity in, are these the adjusted journals that you talked about, the accruals that happened at the year, at the year end? Cause that's, that's what they are, not, he didn't have a conversation with me saying there were some material mistakes or some errors.
If they're not corrected, they're considered.
And that's, that's a year end with anything that's done as a, a accrual, year end accruals, if you don't do them and if they are not corrected, that's why you have this audit process. So like I said, when he comes here, for what he's telling you as an error or a mission that happened fifty, like, I'm gonna say what it is. I'm not gonna say, oh, this happened because I was out. If this an accrual and that needs to have occurred, then I'll say that. And so, so the conversation when he and I have been, this is what need, and there are some, you are right, that may have been like, maybe that's supposed to have been a capital improvement, but it was charged to fixed assets. So at the year end, you do these adjustments. But if we're not, if there's two things that happen, if, if somebody is not there to say we need to do these accruals or in the past, prior to I, I'm, me being there, the other auditor did these adjustments and accruals for the city. And I don't know if it was due to the size of the capacity, so when this new auditor came in, he said, oh, you all have to do all these accruals, you all haven't done it. And that was part, partly because the assistant that was received from the previous year audit, it, it was never a finding, it was never an issue. It was just a part of the cost that was done. Maybe it might not be a separation, but there are also things that this audit firm is doing that's not exactly a separation from being audited, okay? So let's be honest about it, but I, I didn't get it, I didn't, the perception that you have and what was given to me is not the same. It, it, yes, there are adjustments that need to be made, they need to be made year in and someone is responsible. Had I been in the office on a, on a consistent basis, the first year that he said those accruals need to be made, I would have the opportunity to work with my staff and make those accruals. And like I told him, to be quite frank with you, for the twenty nineteen, since I wasn't there, I'm not gonna tell you that those accruals, those, all of those adjusting entries will be made, will be, and may be a finding for the next year because of the timing and the preparation for it, so that's one, one thing. Um, there's a lot of things that in my absence, the way things were journalized reverted back to some old ways that when I came in, I said, hey, this is not being handled correctly, we need to change, but it went back. Reason why, I don't know, I can't answer that. That, there's, and as I've said before, it's important to have a treasurer, somebody that is seasoned, experienced. There are people that's been in my office for twenty years, but they understand, they don't quite understand what they do, they understand the processes. And there's a difference between understanding why it is done from an accounting perspect- as perspective as opposed to process. Because if you don't understand why it's really being done, you're gonna go back to those ways of being repetitive and then it's gonna throw the whole process out. So I have experienced that, I'm not contradicting what you're saying, I'm just saying that the conversation we're having, we're having it from an accounting standpoint, not a layperson. So when we're talking, we're talking on an accounting perspective. And when you're saying it and it's coming out and it's saying errors, that causes a panic. And, and I, and I, no disrespect, but the mayor has created panics before for things that, that really didn't, wasn't called for a panic. So I think we need to have an understanding and allow them to say, but if you, if you tell a layperson something about accruals and adjustments and then you say this mistake, just be, that, that's gonna cause a panic when that's not.
Well, I'm not trying to create a panic, but what I, what I am stating is what he stated to you.
Right.
Um, and maybe you dropped it down because I am a layperson, he said, this, this was an error that needed to be adjusted and corrected and that's what we've done. And we found, every time we start with one, we found another one, and so we had to make all these entries. Now, if you do not correct it, then that is another finding and that is a material mistake. But that's why we're asking that they be, um, corrected and they be approved. They gotta sign off somebody, either Ms. Oliver yourself, the mayor, somebody.
With Kiamian, one, it's a two-part balance, one person, Kiamian. One person keying in, another person approved. Like if Sequito or Janice is keying in a journal, I have secondary approval. We have two approvals in those process. But this happens every year. It's happened every year before. I'm not saying that it's okay, acceptable, but, uh, county, I mean, county department outside, we don't have a large department. So I can imagine, if you talk to the other auditors that are providing assistance, that's probably the same thing. But like I said before, it was never a finding until this new firm came in. And then, like I said, I've been out more than I've been in. So there was never a real opportunity to remedy this situation.
And so my, my discussion tonight is solely about what can we do?
Correct.
To ensure that this doesn't happen again. Does it require training? Do we need to overhaul the department? What needs to be done? Because, um, if we're going from a five hundred dollar, thousand dollar surplus to a six hundred dollar deficit, and we're having these adjustments that are being made, that, um, he stated that has caused the length or the amount of the, the, the audit to, um, so, I think he said, it was seven, seventeen thousand dollars that he, in November, November, that he still had to charge the city, but he had written off fifty-five thousand, or fifty-five thousand that he written, um, charged in seventeen, he had thrown off. And I know you weren't here at this whole time, but I'm saying, we're paying a lot of money. We're over a hundred thousand dollars for this audit at this time. So what can we provide to your department, um, if you're at the helm, and to, as a solution? So going forward, we don't have these entries? Because what, what is explained to me is that the auditors should find this. Our internal controls and our policies and procedures should be so that if we find them before they ever do, then we correct them ourselves.
And, and it goes back to what I said again, at the end of the year, we're supposed to make those, um, adjustments. What, what could have been done, what should have been done, is that the treasurer stayed in office consistently, okay? So, I mean, and like I said, the same issue's gonna apply for next year.
Right.
Because of the situation, in terms of that. And if there are material, large amounts like that, that should be a red flag for the auditor, number one.
It is.
And it should have been a drawing concern, but that's not even a conversation he, he had with me. The conversation that he had, what you're saying about a five hundred thousand, oh, that was a concern. Because I've expressed to him, I've had concerns, and I said, it will mostly apply to the twenty-nineteen. So when you start the audit, I will explain to you, these are the things that I had a concern about. So, I, I, and, and another thing before I forget.
I was just.
Is that when you have an audit, they're gonna, they're gonna, I'm not saying that they are increasing the cost just for the heck of it, but I didn't get this eighty-five percent complete. When I came here, I think you all had that conversation, that they told y'all it was eighty-five percent. How could it be eighty-five percent? And we're like nine months later, and the audit was incomplete, and it wasn't being held out for anything that the financing was doing? Because every time he was giving information, I was getting the information back to him. You knew that you needed the information from the attorney, how long ago? And you said you waited on Rick Howard, you're waiting on Gamble Law Firm, they hang that back. And I came in at that point, because I wanted to follow up with him, because when I thought I had given him his last piece of information, they come back and say they need some additional information. Those are the things that I, like I said, I've had experience with auditors, so I know how this works. So it's not that we're just driving the costs. We need to ask the question, what, what were the other delays or issues?
So, are you, can I, let me, let me ask you this, because I asked him in, in my email, and I forwarded to you. Um, what, why were we paying so much? And he specifically said it was because of the amount of adjustments that they had to do.
And this is, yeah, this same amount they did last, and this is the conversation that.
Actually, this is a medicine, like, it's a sixty, it's a fifty-one issue.
That's questionable. I would tell you that. I mean, because we get the audit pages, and before, the other auditors prior had just as many pages, and not to say it was okay, but we paid them for their services as well.
What was the question?
See, every time we have this conversation, it's always about, yeah, this is costing us extra, this is driving our costs. You know, I mean, the issue is, what is it that we need to get done to have a complete audit? And every time he asked, I worked on it to drive it home. Not gonna say I got it back within two, three days, because some things cost, cost for a little more time. Um, but the hard parts, where we had to go to outside agencies to get information, and they were delaying or putting it out. I, I drove it home to make sure.
So are you saying that they're charging us not for the time that they put in, but the time that they're waiting for us to send documentation?
That's a question for the auditor. What are they charging us for exactly? What are the real breakdowns?
You know, I already asked them.
Usually, the auditors, they don't get what they need. They move on, and just go ahead and write their narrative, you know, and, and.
Cause you know, you all said, there was only a few people that responded to your survey, right?
I know.
And, and I mean, just, um, in, in December, or I think November, I, I had to tell them to go move forward, because everybody else was gonna reply, respond, respond. There was no reason to delay the audit process before then.
None.
Right. When you came back, you actually stated that no one had responded, and I told you that wasn't true. And I called the bank and said, I responded on such, such day in February, and he said, oh, I do have. So I, I made sure that I responded to the, to the email. But, go ahead, 'cause I, we thought that was gonna be a short discussion.
You still?
I'm finished.
And, 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 um, Ms. Wade, you're right, because, uh, when we got those, uh, papers, they were asking us to respond. I didn't wanna respond, because I knew you wasn't there at the time when something happened. When they put some money into my, my ward.
Right.
And I told everybody that that wasn't my money. Um, the young, the man, what's his name?
Jared Cunningham.
Jared Cunningham was in there, and I went back. And I told him that ten thousand dollars was not mine, I had used my money in our project. And I just didn't feel comfortable, uh, filling those papers out, when I knew that you wasn't present, and I knew that, you know, we all keep up with our funding. And I know I had used mine, but at the time, he wasn't in there, he was in there. And they were moving, putting money into, uh, uh, my ward that I did not, wasn't my money.
And since we're on this conversation, um, last week, I got an, um, email, and a con, and I had a conversation with Dixie Brockford, who's head of the State of Alabama Examiner, this, this particular project. And she had a question or concern, because she had gotten one set of financial statements, and there was a mount. And, um, in one account, that she said in terms of revenue, took a tune about thirty thousand dollars, that wasn't in it in the following year. She asked me to send her some information over for the next year. Well, when I looked in the account, my record shows that the money was sitting. So those are things that concern me. So if you're gonna ask me to put my name on it, I wanna feel comfortable in knowing that those dollars and amounts are correct.
That's the reason I asked, ask the people, I feel like, stay, you know, you get my point?
Exactly.
And they do that, and so why are you waiting to?
And also too.
When we told you that?
Usually when they, um, they give you a length of time to respond back. When you don't respond back at that time, then they move on and count it against you.
Right.
As to your, so Counselwoman?
Yeah, my next item is the resolution. Um, I had an opportunity to speak with Attorney Segal, and, um, at the League of Municipalities on, I think it was the seventeenth. Um, and back in November, we were going back and forth on, on whether these recreation employees, uh, whether our vote counted, and what the mayor was doing. I sent him an email, you were probably on it, Mr. President, um, asking him to tell us which way we needed to proceed, or how we need to proceed. He, uh, returned an email to me in December, when my son was in the hospital, asking that we meet at the league, um, that you, uh, myself, and, um, his firm meet at, at the league, and I wasn't able to do that. I, um, returned this email the first of the year, and said, whenever you're available, I am. And so I got an opportunity to meet with him and discuss, um, some of the things that have been going on, and what he instructed us, and what, um, we met with Lori Lane, it was Lori, I think, Mr. President, you've been to Congress, and you may have said, who's young lady in you?
No, she's already, uh, I'm not, I'm not.
Oh, okay. Cause I, she wasn't on any of my emails. And so, um, you were the only one. And then, so I thought maybe you had sent it, but we went over there with, um, and spoke with Lori, and, um, addressed some of the issues that we've been having with the city of Selma. And he, they've stated to us emphatically at that time, that it cannot be done just by vote. It has to be done in the same measure that which was done previously. And so now, um, I came back, um, from that meeting, and asked Attorney Madison to, um, get the resolution. Uh, I thought it was an ordinance that was done, but I was informed by, um, Ms. Harrison, that we actually did a resolution. And so we have to, um, have the resolution, and vote on the resolution to rescind the payment amounts. It cannot be retroactive. And so on the date of our vote, it goes into a question.
I, I assure, proud attorney firm to prepare one, uh, in the course, major changes came in, and it never materialized. And so that was back in November. Because I remember I cried about it, um, from Attorney Segal, who did mention that we had to do the resolution. And that's when I asked the proud, um, law firm to move forward, where to put it down, to hear about it. I think I mentioned it to Mrs. Era, that was during November, right?
Well, I spoke with Attorney Madison, he, um, made me aware that he would provide that, and I guess we would have an opportunity.
Okay, that's fine.
Vote on it on tomorrow.
And I will mention that too.
Because those, those are funds that we had.
Counselwoman Jackson.
Um, those are funds that we had budgeted, that we're still paying. Because of course, those funds were supposed to be paid by the county. So from October one through, um, what is tomorrow date, the twenty-eighth, um, we would have continued to pay that money, and then give over budget. So, um, I wanted to get the matter rectified as soon as possible, and I think you'll be ready.
I was hoping they was gonna pass it over to you, but I guess it felt a little crag.
And are you saying that, um, this was supposed to be done in November, by the, before we were planning as our attorney? And, and you're saying this is January, and what happened? Are we done paying? For, for this contract? I know how y'all like contracts, to be, and we get the work that we asked for. So, are you, November? And it, and it didn't get done? And so now it's passed to the new city attorney?
Yeah, he got this too.
And a whole lot of other contracts that were sent back to us that we thought were done?
Agency contracts too, I think.
Yes, you got a lot.
Ms. Wade, are we done with this contract? Does this contract close?
Yeah, it closed.
Yeah, it's like, it's totally, they had paid them all, they're pretty, they're, they're mistaken on the last fee.
Okay. All right, Counselwoman. Oh, that's it? Okay, wow.
Uh, I had a question while, while we were on this subject. Um, you all met with Mr. Segal.
Oh, speak it out.
You have a letter before I my question, I don't know what the pink letter, it's like a pink slip, it means something, you can't go.
Envoys.
Okay, 'cause I'm gonna ask about.
No, it, it's not, it's not, no.
We love envoys.
This, this is waiting for time.
Okay. I love them.
Yeah, pass them on.
Okay, I wanna look at some of this right there, while I ask my question, then I'll look at it. Um, all the bills for, uh, Attorney Segal are in, Mr. President? Are, are all the bills today in?
Well, uh, no, this is last one, uh, up until December, December twenty-third.
Okay, 'cause I, I would like to look at that. I would, I would like to look at the bill. So, so earlier, Counsel, when we first started this, we said that we were gonna go with the president to, uh, to get to Attorney Segal, and then, you know, Counsel, we were sure my bill came along, but then there are other bills too. I wanna look at in the process, while we're looking at the bills. Um, if we're gonna look at one bill, we need to look at all bills. And I would just like to see, uh, all the charges for the bills for Attorney Segal, as we continue our discussion.
I would say, I would say it too, I would say it.
Yeah, make all of them, yeah.
But this is the latest one, uh, that's up to twelve, twenty-third.
Twelve, December twenty-third?
December, yeah.
From the time of the last bill, the time of last bill?
Yeah.
Well, we ain't got. That does have to do with the question I'm asking. Oh, correct, that's why I'll read that, and, and, um.
We'll have to, we'll have to go on that, um, tomorrow.
Okay, something we gotta vote on, okay. And how many bills after?
Absolutely, and I shouldn't wanna do that.
Um, are we gonna come back to contracts?
Counselwoman, you're asking a question about the bills for Attorney Segal?
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
What was your question?
I wanna see them.
Okay.
I wanna see what's on.
So the bill, let me go ahead and make this, um, plain. When I went to speak with Attorney Segal, you were on the correspondence. I emailed Attorney Segal about the problem set. I felt wrong including the recreation, because I don't like spending my bills. I asked questions of the people that are in a position to give me answers. So I sent you an email, and Attorney Segal, asking what was going on. It was Attorney Segal's request to me to meet. Now, he could have chosen not to meet with me and did research for three or four hours, but he asked, could I meet with you? And I also said to Attorney Segal, if there is an issue with the bill, don't send it to the city of Selma, because I don't mind paying the three hundred dollars for the hour I spent with him at the League of Municipalities on the interest of the city, because we've tossed this around, you've given it to the other firm that did not do anything since November. And so we've continued to pay supplemental payments for three months, when, we went over there for one hour and got it done. And this is not the only item that was done within that hour, that time. It's gonna be several things that either save us some money, and/or, um, prevent us from being in a lawsuit that we discussed. I'm just allowing him to email everyone before I bring up the discussion. But I went over there.
He emailed you from, uh, Attorney Segal?
I guess he would email the president.
It's a constant.
Right. And so I went over there at his request. You were on there, you never stated that it wasn't something I could do, but I've already sent him an email with you on there, and saying, if there is a bill for this service that you asked me to attend, I didn't call you and ask you, can we meet at the league? I didn't, um, send the city of Selma a travel bill for the gas that I paid out in accident for per diem. I went over there because I wanted to sort out the matters of the city finances in the best interest of the city. And rather than him working three or four hours, looking at his law books, and going through those things, and charging us for them, he decided, well, you have a lot of questions, you can give the perspective from the council's position, and you can come over. And so I gladly take on that three hundred dollars, and I've already emailed him to that.
Okay, and finishing, I'm glad you cleared that up, but this was not about you. My item said to the president before you brought this up, as you can see, this is a business item of mine. And we have not had a bill, and I don't know when. So I want to see the bills, and I want to see what's on the bills. It's not about you going, it's not about Counselwoman Jackson going up to speak to anybody. It's about the bills, 'cause we've been, always been talking about the bills. So I wanna see what's on the bills. And I want us to stick with what we said, like I did, and apparently, you're just, you're saying you did, you included the president, you did. And so I want that. I ask for that, and I would like the other bill too, Mr. President, as soon as we get in, I wanna see it.
Yes, I want to reverse the all of bills this way.
I wanna go record, say, this, this attorney is too costly to the city. He spent too much money, and I didn't vote for it, and I hope pray to this council, for everyone.
Let me see it.
When I don't contract.
You need to see the bill.
It's the same bill.
Oh, this is the same, the pink and the white? Oh, okay.
But we just need to vote on it tomorrow.
Well, now that we actually have a city attorney that's in house, we, we may, we may be in a position that, um, this could be our last bill. Um, because we have someone that we can.
Until we see.
And try until we see.
If we put it on the Senate General, oh, okay, yes, a service to the bar of secret for the month. Release a service to the bar of secret.
Let me see, I'm at the head.
We don't have a contract, let us, let's terminate the services. Well, I broke the term, and we just don't use them no more.
Just pay him, and they be too.
I mean, we don't need to use them, no. Let's go on record, if we want, and I'm gonna add up tomorrow. Get out of, Counselwoman?
Yes, but I, I don't wanna go out of, or I know we skipped the attorney.
Oh, sorry.
We skipped the attorney. Well, we didn't skip him, he left. He left, and we moved on. He left, and we moved on. And then my question was about, about the contracts, and all, all the contracts, and all those things.
Attorney?
First of all, with the president and council's permission, I'd like to stay seated as much as possible. I usually withstand for, especially for what I consider the first formal appearance of, uh, this August party. Uh, but I've been dealing with some serious issues with the, uh, bum leg.
Okay, go ahead, that's fine.
It's a pleasure to be here this evening. It's not my first time in front of you, but it's my first time to see an attorney in front of you, which is obviously a new role. Um, I want to say that while I was asked to consider accepting the role, I prayed over it, thought about it, talked with my wife. I have a couple of confidants in the legal profession, not people on the street corner, that I consulted. And after all was said and done, I agreed to accept the position. Um, and after all was said and done, I agreed to accept the position offered me. I did not do it for money. Of course, I wanna repay you, I'm not seeing that.
So, you didn't tell me to put a bone on?
No, no.
This is some free stuff?
No, but, but what I'm getting at is, I'll probably lose money this first, whatever term of office, ten months, twelve months, whatever, I'll probably lose money. But I decided to do this in spite of that. Not because, in spite of that. Because I want to see if I can, through legal representation, help the city of Selma move forward. That's my chief and primary concern. Not my only concern, but my chief and primary concern. The job title is city attorney. It's not the mayor's attorney. It's not the council's attorney. It's city attorney, and I intend to honor that to the fullest extent of both the law, the black letter law and the spirit of the law. Um, having said that, I was, one of my first tasks was to meet with Attorney Graham Mosley of the Gamble Gamble Firm. We met for a little bit over two hours last week. It was constructive meeting. Probably could've used another two hours with him, but I wish if they wanna build the city for that too. So I didn't. Um, I got some documents, but not everything I wanted and needed. And I was asked to hold off getting some more documents because Attorney Mosley said that he would like to try to finish something or the other. I think it basically boiled down to contracts. Um, some of it was finished, some of it wasn't. Uh, I've got three contracts here tonight with me that were brought to my attention by Councilwoman Thomas, Councilwoman Benjamin. One of the contracts involves both wards, wards four and five. The other one ward three, and Councilwoman Thomas's ward, ward seven, I believe. Um, those are the only documents I brought tonight. I did not bring the resolution, but I've already gone over the resolution, talked to the city clerk, the resolution that was passed, and found out what needs to be rescinded. I even spoke to Judge Jimmy Nunn today, who was gracious enough to take time with me, he didn't have to. As a matter of fact, I got a little nervous after a while, 'cause he wanted to keep going. And I was telling him I didn't wanna take up all his time, I know he's a busy man too. Uh, but he was very gracious is my point, very gracious. And before I left, he said, if there was anything else ever in the future, call him. He said, you got my number? I said, yes, he said, call him if you need me. So, I say that because I want all of you, each of you and everybody in the audience to understand that my chief concern in this position is not money, it's to help the city of Selma. It's to help the city of Selma. Um, I turned seventy-one years old last year. That's what gave me the most pause, when I thought I'm taking this job. Uh, I'm not a young whippersnapper anymore. And, uh, I knew it would be a daunting task, but I believe I'm up to it. Had I not thought so, I would've said no.
Seventy-one, you just started to live.
I missed that council.
Seventy-one, you just started to live.
I hope so, I hope so, especially in light of what happened to world famous basketball player and nine, eight other people on Sa- on Sunday, yesterday. Let me pass out, uh, the contracts I brought. And bear with me, uh, not for the document itself. The documents were not really much of a problem. I had a miscommunication, uh, with Councilwoman Benjamin, but because I was busy getting the technology situated, I'm used to, I'm used to handling my log records almost on my cell phone. I have, I have three email address, had, because the board association has rules about that too. I have three email addresses on my cell phone. I have all of my financial data on my cell phone from about four now five financial institutions. And I have access twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week to my legal and financial information. I haven't had that the last week, so I was here. But I was being patient, and I think people are working diligently to ensure that I get that. I really do. Um, one or two I can call by name, uh, Nati and, and, uh, Miss Curtis. They've been working as fast as I think, I think they can handle this best to get me technologically up to speed.
Major Nurse, keep in mind, keep in mind, justice is blind.
Was that, who was that missing communication?
No, there wasn't anything, it was trying to cool the email down.
Yeah, 'cause your email was not working.
It was not, it was not up and working, I don't think, until last Friday. Then in four fifteen, I had a message that I.
Yeah, and I think you just got.
Councilwoman.
You don't ask your question before?
Go ahead, go ahead, go ahead.
Is this all for me, attorney?
No, those are to be passed out.
Pass down.
Have, have, before we dismiss the, the lawyer, have he sent the letter to the mayor to get all our stuff back up and running?
I will check it tomorrow.
Before we dismiss him now? He, he, he came down here and he's supposed to send the letter.
Go ahead.
I, I was just about to say.
Yeah, before, before, we need our stuff on in there.
As well, um, I was looking over that bill and we was doing some Supreme Court ruling and appellate, uh, findings and, uh. We need to make sure that we've finished with all of our legal matters that he's.
That's why I said.
Before we just let him go. And maybe he, we're finished from him doing the day-to-day things that he's been doing on our behalf. But he's still got some Supreme Court stuff that he's, that's on the final bill and that could be over.
That can linger on.
Was it just one contract?
That can linger on.
I think it's just extra.
No, that was the fir- that was the first, that was the first.
These are some of the contracts that we already have, sir.
These are some of the contracts you were supposed already to have.
My board.
Yeah, he worked on them.
Well, I reviewed them so far and had to seriously add to one, yours.
Mm-hmm, oh, you did, is it right? Is it correct?
I believe so.
I can get a copy, I can put it on.
Is that from, line nine, you gotta put the line. Okay. Did you pull it from the general fund?
There it is. No, I asked first.
You got it, you got it.
I think you said the contract.
From Cogan.
Yes.
Yes, my contract is twenty nineteen, they didn't give me prepared until twenty twenty.
I changed it. I left the dates intentionally blank because I wasn't sure the date. I had a reservation about the date.
That's why, that's why I told you to send it back.
I can correct all that.
Um, we have a report tomorrow. The city clerk, you know, for election process, send it.
That's four.
We don't go on that shit tomorrow.
We need, we need to, we need to check.
In mind.
That we discussed.
You got yours?
Yeah, and for Mr. Fitz.
Yes, ma'am.
Might need to be a contract.
Your next Councilwoman, Thomas.
Huh? I got mine.
You got one?
She said she, she has her.
I have my contract. Mm-hmm. You just need to have yours, 'cause keep it registered.
I, I, I think I do. I'm sorry.
I, I, I see.
But this, I have one question about this, uh, president board.
Yes, ma'am, I came prepared to, to have some changes made, such as the date, I wasn't sure what dates were applicable. Uh, but I'll take note, I'll make, Councilwoman Thomas, I'll make notations and whatever changes are appropriate, they'll be made before the meeting tomorrow.
Okay, well, this contract right here, you know, Graham was, uh, this is one. This is one that, uh, Graham was, uh.
You proved the code, that's right. He just paid the salary.
This contract right here with, uh, Graham had did this contract, and he was, he always had to go back. This contract was done when we said about the, uh, puppet, the, the building with Mr. Robert Walker. You know, we agreed to get him in on, uh, under the old contract. And it was done, they didn't finish any of that work. So you, I'm gonna have to bring you all the, I have all the notes.
Can you, can you bring that first thing in the morning?
I'm gonna have to bring you the, the, um, I'm gonna have to bring you everything that we voted on. I have it in the folder that we agreed to.
Okay.
They didn't have, they, they never, this is old business. And this is a new one right here, that they're supposed to follow up on.
Okay.
But they didn't do it.
All right, everything, everything you have in front of you is on my computer, so I can make changes pretty, pretty quickly, as needed.
Uh-huh. Cause, uh, thank you. Do you think we'll be able to vote on this to move forward with this? This is the contract that Graham had, he, you know, we talked about Mr. Robert, will you take Mr. Robert Walker to be the one to work upon the old contract with, uh, with the buildings?
Yep.
Mm-hmm, he did it. But you know, every time he does it, you know, the mayor told him that they were, he wasn't signing any more contracts. But he always sticks his name up there, and then we have to go back and redo it. So do you want me to get this to, uh, to Madison to do? 'Cause he might have to go ahead and do another one, old with Corey name on the back.
He can, he can have that written about tomorrow. It's, it's a matter of.
Mm, all he just got to go to, 'cause the mayor already told, uh, Gamblers and Gamblers that he would no longer sign any more contracts, but he.
And what I'm saying is, anything the body asks me to do that's not illegal or immoral or unethical, I'm gonna do.
Isn't, yeah, and that's in his computer, so he could probably do that in his, with his eyes closed.
You got the back page.
Your computer right here?
No, no. That's another thing, I'm used to carrying my tablet over there, but I don't. I can carry, I can carry it and see it.
You want me to send it to your iPhone?
Should.
Highlight, take your highlighter, 'cause it's not the whole contract, right? It's a signature page.
It's a signature.
Okay, well, you can mark it out.
Mark it. This is what, this is the problem right here. You can mark it. This is. And then you're gonna have to do another one with Corey name on the back. That's it tonight. Is there anything else?
Okay. Anything more?
There, everything I have to add, um, yours to mine, too. I, I'll give to, I'll write it on.
Hit, uh, the president's name?
President.
Just write it on.
I'll write it.
Well, put it, put it on my calendar.
So basically.
You put it on both calendars.
I have seven.
I have two. Well, we have one for the puppet building and my, uh.
Well, give me one of the two. Give me one of the two.
I think Corey, we already voted on that.
Yeah, we voted.
So we just have two from you and two from Councilwoman.
That's it. And you got the one for, for the clerk. I, that's fine.
Yeah, I'll check it.
That's the one you gave us.
And what I, what I'll do, council persons, is after I make the adjustments, the corrections, I'll email you what corrections were made. If you have any questions, I'll, I'll, I'll take that.
And I need to ask you this too, uh, Attorney Seagull. Did, did Graham give you all of the, all of the information that they had stopped on? 'Cause we have to finish up a, a contract between Judge Armstrong. He, uh, we agreed, we agreed, we voted on it for Judge Armstrong to get the Dallas Academy bill. And we was, wanted to draw up a contract saying what's what.
What's your academy?
Dallas Academy.
Dallas Academy.
Mm-hmm, uh, that's, that contract, they never finished it?
I don't think, I don't think he gave me that information. I, we, we talked quite a bit. He handed me probably ten to twelve sheets, ten to fifteen sheets, but I don't remember Dallas Academy being one of those sheets.
And also, we had did the, uh, the resolution, uh, for the keys to be given to the, uh, city clerk. We did, uh, it was supposed to been, uh, it was something supposed to deal with it, but, uh.
Anytime, anytime you think of any of this, just shoot me an email.
They never, they never did finish up, uh, they left, they, they just left.
Yeah, he, he, uh, Attorney Mosley was, um, candid enough to admit that they had a nice stack of stuff.
We got it, it's in our phone, it's in our phone that he emailed us. Uh, Andrew, you have yours on in the phone? Uh, we all have it, but, uh, we never got the documentation in writing for the sign on of what we, uh, agreed.
He also said, uh, before I left, that if I need any of the other information, any other help, just send it to him. He also said too, however, that he was leaving the firm by the end of this month, end of this month, I think. So, as my only contact person so far at the firm, I mean, I have any other contact person at the firm.
Woody has it.
Okay.
Attorney Woody, that's it.
It should be finished already.
These are the agency's contracts that he give out each year.
He gives it out.
Basically, that's the, um, the top sheet. The contract that he has.
Councilwoman Thomas, while you're waiting in silence, um, how long ago did you submit your stuff? You, I know you have a, a number of contracts. Uh, and see, like, some of your stuff has been submitted long enough to be completed already before it gets to the new city attorney.
Well, all of them, the, the main stuff is the buildings, uh, contracts have not been, uh, city property contracts.
And the keys?
Yeah, the keys, they, they, we've been dealing with that over a year. And, uh, we did so many resolutions and, 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 uh, things that agreed to in the minutes that it was a stall. It was a stall that, uh, left us, and here it is, twenty twenty, that we still haven't got this. Uh, he sent a copy to our phone, and I will let you have the copy that he did, uh.
Which I didn't.
On the, uh, he wrote up a contracts, uh, resolution on about the keys, city property. He knows that, uh, under the law that, uh, the, the city key's supposed to be in there.
I already have that.
Okay, and he, uh, the last one was that, uh, we had went back and changed the, uh, our property with the buildings. We had, uh, went back to the old, we had changed the language with new. And they were charging people, uh, higher prices and the, the, the customer, they would have to pay most, pay most of everything to make sure they had the insurance covered and everything. So instead of, we didn't have a body in there. So what we did, since we got Robert, he would be a part-time contractor and part-time to the council, that he could go, he would have to be the one to do all the things that they need to.
Set up.
Yeah, and we went back to the old, to the old contract. We not following, but they are still using, see, he held out so much stuff. Uh, he, he did so, they override the council with their decision, and they kept what the mayor gave. So they using what the mayor had. And what we voted on, this body voted on, it never was did up to pass on to the department head. So the department head is still using whatever the mayor gave her and not what the council voted on and for the lawyer to draw up. So we need to get that in place because there's a lot of people that has been paying money for this city property, and we have been voting on our information as the attorney that we was waiting to draw the papers up, which never happened. So we need to take care of that, that problem right there right away. 'Cause they are still, uh, in violation of, of charging these people for this. And, uh, we voted on it. They still using what we didn't agree on.
All right, Councilwoman.
For my marathon, I'm gonna be the cop times for me. Some of these are taken care of. The last two will be announcements on tomorrow, Mr. President. So, um, number eleven is quote for phone service and quote for internet service for the Office of Selma City Council. And I had asked, um, our administrative assistant sometime ago to give us a quote for that because we don't have communication with our constituents, even though we have hired someone to be our liaison for that. We do not have access to what we should have access in that office. Now, we can either wait and see if the mayor would turn this stuff back on, would allow the C I T departments to turn this stuff back on, or we can move on and take care of this ourselves and see what the quote looks like to get our own phone service and our internet service. Um, the administrative assistant reported to me Um, the administrative assistant reported to me that we will have a live person on site on Wednesday, um, Mr. President, to come in to accept, uh, access, uh, that area and to provide us a quote concern. Will this be for both areas, for phone and internet or just for internet? Phone and internet? So we'll, by the next meeting, we should, that's a long time for our constituents still not to have access to it. But by the next meeting, we should have a quote, um, available to present to council. And Madam, uh, and Ms. President, am I missing anything?
Yeah, my question though, if the, uh, quote is not over a certain amount, it's a matter of we just per, uh, preparing to purchase or any move forward if you are.
Right, if you have an amount that is low and all that.
Uh-huh, so as soon as he gets there. So at least when he gives it to you, uh, we'll have almost two weeks to look, look at it and, and match it against the baseline.
Longest is up, up until the fifteenth, that awesome.
Fifteen, they got.
Cell phone has, uh, is with the city, so they don't have to begin it everywhere.
Okay.
And if it's, uh, if it's a matter of you have to put the stages, so you don't exceed the limit, he should move forward with it.
Okay.
I have a question, what, what, what kind of equipment are you talking about using? It's gonna be a computer like that?
I'm, I'm speaking of a phone, so a phone for her, um, so the constituents can call us and then service itself, so not equipment, but service.
That she can use on her phone?
Uh, that she can use on, on the computers, the computer is still usable, it is just shut down from internet service.
Well, as of today, the computer, uh, would not even let me log on because there's some malware and a virus and I tried to, um, update and it.
Oh my god.
Take that back. So as of today, I mean, and I screenshotted that, so once it said that it's, it's actually now subject to virus. Quite sure about this going over the floor that the virus will get on the crash and I don't.
Oh, in that case, that changes my answer to hardware and software.
You say.
It's ridiculous, it's totally ridiculous. So if you would get us a quote on a piece of hardware, like a portable laptop maybe or something like that, getting a quote on hardware and software.
And probably.
Came pregnant.
Ron is shut down as well and the mayor stated that on the, uh, radio Friday, he stated, I heard him say that he shut the computer down to keep Ms. Jane and Thomas from doing her church work.
And Ms. Jane, so go ahead.
And it wasn't, it wasn't, it wasn't church work that she was doing, that was actually a war meeting that was being held at her end of year. And, but he, he clearly stated that on the radio that, that's why he shouldn't.
Yeah, and then guess what the minister said? Guess what the minister, the minister said that, that he kicked us, we've been having, we used to have war meets in city hall and they were locking the people up in the building and we were going out the back door. So the citizen of Ward Seven said they would not come back downtown anymore. So for the last years that I've been in office, I've been having my meeting at Ward Chapel, any kind of program. Uh, all my ward meetings have been at a church that I have not, they have been so nice. The pastor lives in my ward and he says that anytime that I want to have a ward meeting with the people in Ward Seven, the doors are open. And I've been going for the last, this is my fourth year, I've been going there. And when I had my last ward meeting, this, this, this mayor shot the computer. Well, Ms. Ms. Benjamin wasn't supposed to get her stuff done because they said, they don't know how she did it, but, uh, she did get her stuff done. It, they said she wasn't supposed to got it done and, but she got hers done first and I was last. Uh, shut the computer down to keep my citizen from having their last ward meeting of the year and get, I couldn't even give them a report on work orders or anything. But you know what? God is good God, cause you know what, them doors open down there. And we had a wonderful, President Boer was there, the children was there, the citizens were there. The devil is alive, you gonna stop us from doing what's right. And we did have, we didn't have no papers, we didn't have no, nothing, but we, we had a wonderful court.
I prepared to prepare to fly, but that's just a lot that he said.
Well, so back to my item, um, if you would get the hard, the quote for the hardware and the software and we can move on that. So item number twelve, um, uh, these are coming back. So it's update on grant writer, which I want to separate from inventory clerk services. So I want to, uh, so we need a process on how we're going to, uh, communicate with the newly hired grant writer, um, Mr. President. And also how we're going to, well, that's communication, submitting stuff and find out what chief's writing on and the update on what it is that chief, cause I have something else I need to. Well, not something else, I don't know if I submit to the first thing. I have something I need to submit to her, so we need a, um, a procedure that we're gonna use, uh, so that we can get updates from her and get information to her. To her for her services that we contracted for.
I think it would be wise for us to give a list to her.
Yeah.
As to what I needs her, rather than her just writing back. We don't need it, all we need it, but can't ever match it.
Right.
So I think it would be wise for us to give her.
Did we give her a list?
Of what I needs are.
Something she's working on already, I think.
Did we give her a list? I don't, I don't know.
Mm-hmm, we had initial, um, conference call, um, with her and, um, Ms. Ms. Benjamin, you weren't able to be on that initial conference call cause you asked to be a part of that, um, committee, Ms. Youngblood was on there, myself, um, I think you came over to the office. And, um, we, we spoke with her, actually, she texted me today while I was in court and asked me, could she speak with me about an update? So I'll, um.
Can we bring her to the council?
And we need to send a report for her to, um, so she won't have to text Councilwoman Jackson, we need a procedure.
Definitely have a procedure.
So that I can do this.
It's, it's actually.
The lady that came.
Ms. Taylor, Ms. Taylor asked.
More important, we need a list given to this lady.
Yes.
Um, I can't see paying this lady seventy thousand dollars.
You have paid.
She's writing a letter for something that we don't need, give her a list of I needs and then she will know exactly what she needs to write back to us.
So first of all, let's, let's read the contract that we, uh, put in. So we are not paying her seventy thou, seventy thousand dollars, we're paying sixty and that sixty thousand dollars is for the hours she labor. And so have we gotten the bill yet, Ms.?
Not, not that I'm aware of.
No, we haven't, we haven't even received the, the first bill yet, um, and so what's, what's the name? Azimut.
Yes, we have, yeah, we have. I, I, I don't know, but I'll, I'll have that information for you tomorrow. She did send a bill.
Okay, so she, she's been working this, I can't.
If that was six thousand dollars, we got a bill, she didn't produce nothing.
Yeah.
So we need a.
I mean, not yet, but.
We need a hundred list to this lady, we paid sixty thousand dollars for her, so that she can have a whole excuse what I needs are, go through and write it back to me.
Well, basically, I guess we're going on, just going to list to her or whatever.
Right, and so, um, what we officially identified was, um, public safety and so she's working on a FEMA grant for the, um, for, um, the fire department to ha, try to get that one point eight million dollar truck. Um, and so she's been on the phone back and forth with Chief Graham because Chief Graham actually came to me because we don't have technology here.
Can I report that tonight?
Uh, I don't know if he would report that tonight, but we don't have technology here at the city. And so he had to utilize my services to, um, actually scan and email her information. Because, um, if we waited on the city to allow the services to be provided, then we'd be like the grant that we missed out on on December the third first. And she's also looking at a public safety grant for the police department. But I'll make sure I'm going to send everyone an email tomorrow with her information on it and give a reply back, um, and everyone have access to her and you send.
I don't think we all need access to her like that. We need to communicate a list to the president. He gets her to the meeting, she comes and update us so that she's not talking to the, the chief of fire, the chief of police, planning and development. I think we need to communicate this list that has been expressed to the president. And she can come and update us, uh, concerning it because it is sixty thousand dollars, whether we pay a dollar a day or sixty thousand dollars a year, sixty thousand dollars. So we need to communicate to her a list on that.
I don't actually see that bill she's admitted, but see exactly what you're charging.
I'll have it for you tomorrow.
Make sure we have it tomorrow. Are you all okay? I'll make sure I put the email out to everyone and then you all can get it to the president. But I'll make sure everyone have access to her.
Yeah, but he'll be on your email, right?
Mm-hmm, so are you all okay with this?
I'm pretty much present.
Are, are you all okay with communicating the list to the president? Yeah, okay, okay, so we'll, um, find a way to get that list appropriately to the president so that he can be our central stopping point on that. Uh, the other thing is the inventory clerk services, now I don't know who can update me on this, I'll start with you, Madam Finance Lady. Uh, because I know you know that they've been here on site. Could you tell us how the process is going because we, this is one of the things we really, really wanted when we were talking in the budget, adding it to the budget. It is important for us to know our inventory specifically, uh, for budget matters purposes, but also if, to see if we need things that we can work on, um, and, and so.
Last week, um, a representative came back from, from Asset Inventory Management Company and attempted to do the last few items that we overlooked. Um, they did make it to the swimming pool, Dinkins Pool in East Elm, but the door was locked. But there's really not much inventory there as, um, Terry Jack, Jackson stated that, like, the state vest and things were over at the, um, the, um, stadium due to breaking and so he went over there to do that. Um, our most valuable and most important thing that's here was the I T department. And for the second time, the mayor refused to allow him to tag an inventory of items. So, um, for I T, yeah, I went up, I came up to I T department, she did instruct us that, and he had to go back through the mayor. He went and actually got in the mayor's office and he had a conversation and the mayor said he would not allow him to do that. Or, 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 I don't know, I'm sure if it was the mayor or Ms. Simmons, but, um, nevertheless, the mayor's office communicated that they will not allow them to tag and do inventory. And that's just a matter of taking tag, scanning and typing in the information. I mean, it's nothing that he, he's not touching the computers in any kind of way to alter anything, it's just tagging and scanning and typing in his system what that item is, um.
Madam Treasurer, um, at one point we had, um, we had boxes, some top boxes being delivered almost every day to the I T.
Technology.
To technology. Um, do you have, does your office receive the invoice in addition to the I T department? Um, I know it's.
We receive invoices for what she, for what she's paying in, um, if there's, if it's being purchased through a third party, like if Black, Black Belt Technologies purchasing the items and we are paying them for their services, we won't have the inventory per se because they do the installation and something. But there was a series prior to me, before the, um, last time of, um, technology equipment and different things that was ordered that came down from the mayor's office, not I T.
Do you have a pu, purchase order request on every single purchase?
Every, I should have one, I just don't know what, what the, you know, what it is that they.
Is it possible, since the mayor's denied access, is it possible for you to take the purchase order request, give it to, uh, Madam I T and ask, ask her, ask her where those items are and if someone tagged those items, so could come in and tag them?
And that was the offer, the first time to leave the tags for them to be sent to her, but I thought it would be best because we have, um, laptops. We have surface books.
Lots of laptops.
Lots of laptops, um, surface books and, and, um, different answers, I actually have a laptop, surface books, um, multiple cell phones, you all, you know, we have cameras, um, all that information and we don't have access to do that, so. I think that's inventory that can walk out of the city easily. Um, he did get an opportunity, Councilwoman Short, to go to the, um, the safe room already, I think that's the billboard and he inventoried it. He tagged generators and stuff like that, so things like that, he, he was able to do, but the I T, the most expensive part, um, he was not able to have access to.
Once the list is being generated, we will get a copy of the generated list minus I T.
Right.
Did he give you a timeline?
Um, no, but she did, but I was probably.
It's a she goes on.
Um, so basically we'll have a report, but it's gonna be incomplete, yeah.
Well, I think, I think for the record, that needs to be identified, what the problem was and make that a part of our inventory, um, control list. But, but, but I, I do agree with Councilwoman Benjamin, if we can get copies of the invoice and then we can just tag those knowing, although we hasn't physically seen it, we know we bought it.
And that, now, keep in mind, it's gonna go back for years.
Right.
So everything that she's been buying over the course of the years, if it had appreciated or we not sold, which we still have a place where things need to be set, sold or passed on, it'd be, it's still, it's surplus somewhere, so.
Everything should be some place.
Right.
Everything that we purchased should be in a place.
Well, just making a matter of record, we don't have full access to the I T department to identify what property we have or property we don't have.
And I will restate that for the record on tomorrow.
But we're, but we're utilizing our invoices from the treasurer's office that will, uh, validate what we bought.
That's only gonna be current for two years.
It's not, it's not validating that, that we got it, we validated it for.
It's only gonna be current for two years and then we would have to pull, really would have to go through every, um, P O and see what we are actually purchasing because, like I said, some of this stuff is coded in different departments and I try to make sure that we code on a fixed asset under four thousand, over five thousand, but there's some stuff that may have escaped us. So I just, I try to check every invoice and make sure, you know, we get capital equipment. And it used to be the process during the Evans administration and I think Perkins administration too, before anything is purchased out of a department, it had to go through the I T for, so that it was compatible with our server and our system software. So nothing could be purchased without her approval. So she would, I mean, so all of that should be under paid out of that fund, but when we file our documents, we don't file them, we file them by vendor and not department.
Let me, let me ask you, so currently with the city of Southern, each department can make their own purchases, is that correct?
Yes, but when you talk about computers and stuff like, and when it comes to our office, and I can't say what, what is escaping, but when it comes to our office, if they're making, uh, electronic or tech, technology purchases, I look at it, if it bypasses Betsy, I send it back to Betsy because we can't order it without.
That's how you get us.
Right.
So, uh, and are they being delivered to a centralized person, so, so. Like.
I T.
Where I, I'm just saying for anything, just like, um, for police units or for, um, a, a new desk um, that we, we paid a thousand dollars for or six thousand, like the one we paid for the mayor's office. Um, and so that needs to be tagged, um, so it doesn't leave, um, and who is in charge of receiving everything that's purchased? So is there a centralized purchasing agent? So one person gets, like, I don't, I'm not allowed to purchase in our agency. I write up my requisition, tell them what I want and all my item number, I send it over to one person and they purchase it. And then I get my things tagged and everything and then they send me something at the end of the year saying, sign off that you still have this computer, sign off that you still have this desk, sign off that you still have this printer. And so we have, do we have?
We, we don't have a centralized location where, but when Councilwoman Johnson, little short proposal, correct me if I'm wrong, he also discussed a purchasing clerk, having a purchasing clerk on board that moving forward, once we got this inventory established, then that person was responsible for updating, logging and keeping up, but, um.
And purchasing.
Right.
And purchasing.
So everybody's got purchasing.
Right, it comes to that central.
Comes to that person.
Centralized.
Now, little Councilwoman Benjamin suggested, and which was a great idea, um, because they have, the departments have controlled their supply speed uh, as a result of pulling all the supplies to one line item and therefore it had to go through the review and, um.
Yeah, I noticed the, the decrease in spending.
Right, so, uh, and that was a great idea, um, because otherwise everybody was just spending and when it ends being, they're moving the line items. Now, efforts, they know that, hey, you gotta spend carefully because when, when that's gone, that's it.
Well, I think once we assume and fashion out a budget, we need to include, include that into our query. And once the inventory has been completed with identification of I T. Uh, it's not fully accounted, then that query will know exactly where our attention I T. And then that person will be required to, that, that will be responsible for purchasing whatever item every department.
Every department.
And then once they purchase it, then they will tag it and make it part of our inventory. I think.
I saw this paper to, for her, um, for her office.
Right.
Safety for us, we may need to put the process that he just said on paper because people are still gonna try to purchase whatever. And you will then, you will have an instrument to say, um, the council came up with the process, this is the process that. Want for you to purchase this ten thousand dollar piece or whatever, this is what you're gonna have to do. You're gonna have to go see Madam Purchasing, whatever, his or her name may be, you gotta go see her.
Can you suggest to that person, uh, the, uh, Councilor's office?
You know, I, I.
No, man.
I think it's a clerk, a centralized, that's a centralized.
That person also get.
No, I mean, when she, when it gets to her office, if somebody's trying to purchase something without that purchasing clerk.
I think she should be assigned to her office.
Yeah, it's, it makes sense. Yeah, it's, it makes sense.
Because like at 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 the college, it's still um, it's the people who do the copy and all that, so it's a centralized, they have to take it there regardless of what department it is, you have to sign off on it, they code it, then when they bring it to your department, uh you have a kind of, you have to sign up on a form that, hey, uh I received it, blah, blah, blah. Then at the end of the fiscal year, then they're gonna say, make sure, are you still in possession of this particular information? I signed off.
You got one person like that?
Um.
I know you have space.
We got, we have space, but that will help, that will also help um the the um the city clerk because she's she's responsible for right now key and end, but if we had a personal clerk, that person is getting reviewed and.
Yeah, she will.
Um and since we're on this subject, we're talking about budget and I know we said, looking at a budget, we're almost halfway through the year by March. My suggestion would be that you all consider looking at next year budget ahead of time.
I got you.
And and instead of trying to fix something that we're halfway through because you all um throughout the year make amendments anyways. So if we could just start early ahead of time, um I can do projections, you know, based on uh two quarters where we are, but just start having a conversation about what you like seeing the budget so we won't, so you'll have your budget already ready, so when the mayor has his budget, y'all can compare what y'all have and have a conversation. Yeah, instead of waiting to see what he has and if y'all can have and y'all can have a conversation, dialogue between each other because your budget is pretty much already prepared other than some tweaking.
Councilor, good, good luck. Okay, Councilwoman, what you finished?
Okay, we're running right along um to hiring practices at City House. So I want to make sure that um, Ms. President, you brought up at one point, at one meeting, um the hiring practices and the laws that surround our hiring practices. Would you please get us the law, we haven't said it, Terry now. That's okay, Ms. President.
I know that.
That's okay, Ms. President, Mr. Attorney.
Yeah, I know you were applauding, I mean, the hire, supposed to put out that don't put that E verify, um hopefully they don't do that, but uh.
I just want a law on it.
If you ask me one, that's I can't give you one, but.
No, I'm saying, but you.
I'm not, no, no.
Get it for us, yeah, I can see you.
Yeah, like when we meet in two weeks, uh give us the the law on it so we know that the city is protected concerning our hiring practices. Because what ha- was ha- has happened, Mr. Attorney, and it may not be anything or it could be a big thing, uh we 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 had a massive layoff and I know you know about that, but we also had um a small uh hiring here lately, but um people who have been hired are not people who were laid off. And so you you made a profound statement, you are the city's attorney, that's correct. So keep us protected on that if we were to find out um our practices, are are we within the law?
Specifically as it relates to E verify or in general?
No, no more than that.
E verify, but but uh and not in general, specifically, I'm specifically speaking about this massive layoff that we had and then when we, when we came back and did a rehiring, um we did not choose from that group, well, not fully, fully from that group. We went and and hired, we mean in the city, hired new people rather than picking from the people that we laid off. And so if we were to expand on that for us in about two weeks.
Sure.
To make sure that the city is protected.
And also too, the follow up on Councilwoman Benjamin, when you lay off a door at a certain period of time, you have to notify, now I think it's six months, so you have to notify them in writing whether they're rehired or whether they're fired, but if they're fired, you're supposed to spell out the reason why they were fired. So check and see that we filed up a C D.
So that we're protected on that.
So we're protected on that.
And number fourteen, pub, so public works, underutilized line items. Um Madam Treasurer, when I got home and and we, the council voted on, um you know, the gay, oh, I'm sorry. You had your hand up?
Um I'll let you get it through and then I come in.
It's about hiring.
Go ahead.
Okay, 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 so public work. This is annoying. When I got home and I thought about it, we uh we had um appropriated gas tax and all those kinds of things, I I was wondering and I called you, you and I spoke maybe five minutes only concerning the underutilized uh line items and public works. Now, public works is responsible for um um to a certain extent, the potholes, you know, not when they turn into cave-ins, you know, we need more money in it, but potholes, they're responsible for that, they submit that in their budget, but they have not been taken care of the potholes. And so we decided, we 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 just didn't ma- disseminated money nine, ten ways, however many ways we did it, but we did not consider in in our appropriations that we had money already in the budget of public works that was not being utilized or underutilized uh in the area of filling potholes. And since they're not filling potholes and that's in the budget of public works, I wanna know how much is in that line item to fix potholes that they should be fixing anyway?
Okay, I um I will um check the balance minus what you all appropriated for you all to use for your line item. Um but I do know that in the past, they used it to purchase asphalt when it was purchased and when the asphalt truck was up and running. But I'll check and see what what they spent.
Cause a lot of, thank you for saying that, a lot of what's in my contract is asphalt and I'm here that asphalt, when you get the, you know, asphalt costs money, you have to go get the asphalt and I, for one, I don't want, there's a certain way that I explain to my contractor that I want mine done, I want them cut out, I want them packed, I don't want them, you know, it's a certain way and and that cost and if there's money um over in public works, then I think we can do some reshuffling.
Hold on, I think, uh, is still Councilwoman? Okay, hold on, I got Councilwoman Thomas, and also the gas tax can only be used for uh street, right?
Yes.
Okay, I think it was a dispute between organization and gas tax interchangeable.
Somebody had confused.
Yeah, yeah, Councilor, strictly earmark.
For strict.
For strict, that's it. All right, Councilwoman.
You know, I told you I had some items on my uh, I didn't give it to you.
Yes, sir.
And I think it's very important to the citizen itself, um um y'all know how I am, I go by it, strictly by what 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 the legislative say.
Is this by, is this by?
Uh, this is not by gas.
Hold on, Councilwoman Benjamin, I have a few more.
Oh, yeah, I have a few more items. That's what you were doing, oh, she, you need to add, she wants you to add.
I have some things, I never get to get a chance to put my stuff in, I just wanted.
So she was starting number twenty-two, Ms. President?
Nope, I never did give.
Okay.
Go ahead and add your item, Councilwoman, before I go off.
Go ahead.
No, don't do those, don't do those.
And he's gonna add it to that.
Okay, I want to, you know, I want to follow up on our, on the lights, the light boxes, the switch box.
That's number twenty-two.
Uh huh, and uh I want to uh ask, follow up with um Ms. Jackson on her her lights.
Twenty-three.
And uh I want to follow up on the uh 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 the importance of our uh our city property. Some things that we uh, if we don't get a, get a hold to it and and do these repairs, it's it's our, our property, some of our property is already going down. So I just want to address some of those.
So that's twenty-two.
Mm-hmm, yeah, that's what.
I think before I move to the next item, I think uh Councilwoman Short might have.
Oh, Councilwoman Short, I have a question.
Yeah, uh as it relates to public works, underutilized line item, I was, I was concerned about what items was that because there's no major monies other than uh equipment, uh vehicle repairs and and that's about it.
Uh, he's talking about the lab fund, public work, state gas tax.
Oh, okay, thank you.
It is the same, we don't arrest the, the rest of the ones.
Public work.
I'm going to the public work budget, I said.
They, they.
What we're bringing about, I need to send some of that dollars off to you.
Yeah, so and it's for, and it, what we're dealing this for, it's for.
It's strictly.
I I I I thought in years past, that that gas tax primarily used the cave-ins.
It was.
For major, major, not 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 potholes, I'm I'm serious, not potholes, I'm talking about some major, the passage that is taking place in the city. And if they're giving it up, the mom's young, they're about thirteen dollars, not gonna accomplish that.
Right.
So what have we accomplished?
The potholes, the potholes.
Preventing from being major.
They get it, man.
We're being too realistic, well.
Preventing, from preventing it from being major catastrophe, but in the pa- in the past though, we have used jump fund money where we tried to do uh um reserve, um we had some major cave-ins of probably two, three hundred thousand dollars. We took jump fund money and utilized that because there wasn't enough in the lab fund to cover it.
And also we met, from time to time, we met, um block grants, stuff like that, and maybe some of the A T R funds in the past.
Well, my catalyst for this is um the number of um complaints, and you know what our insurance is, the number of complaints, the number of complaints that's on the desk of the clerk and we should, we should probably have her report on that, the number of complaints that continue to rise concerning um the potholes. So now it's gonna cost us on this end or that end and the more it rains, I'm understanding something else happens under there, uh the more that it rains and the water sits inside the whole, so the catalyst was the number of um constituents who were calling to say, hey, my axle is broken, um hey, my rim is broken, I just bought these rim, I just bought these tires, I just bought this, but every time I go to down to the clerk, the insurance company is saying no to my complaint and it's, let me tell you, if it's been reported to us and we know about the pothole, it's a legitimate complaint, so I don't know what the thing is with the insurance company, but it's a legitimate complaint, once it's being reported and is made known that the council, it's a west, council, mayor, public works, whatever, once we become aware of it, we're responsible for it.
Yes, whether these potholes are getting in the, that.
No.
It's getting worse as the days go by.
Yes, Jesus.
And we gotta find a realistic way to address it.
Yeah.
And and I don't think all of these money, gas, meat tax is gonna take care of it.
Grants, no, no, he's gonna have, he's gonna have to do grants, he's gonna have to serve, have to do, uh, planning developer gonna have to take, uh, like some of our streets areas are bad, uh, he's, he's, he's gonna have to apply for, he's gonna have to apply for grant to to get some of this repaired.
He's looking at a mile, he's looking at.
Yeah, he gotta apply for grants.
One million dollars or more.
Money.
Yeah, that's one million dollars or more.
We're gonna apply for it, I'm gonna get it.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, I just put in for, the reason why I put in, I just, excuse me, uh, Councilwoman Benjamin, but I just talked to Henry, I've been here, this will be my fourth year in this seat, I came in with no money and uh I had an area that uh, I mean, we had little potholes, but it came to be big for the years since I've been here. But I put uh resurfaced back over off of Summerfield on Tenth all the way back because the buck of my money I have uh been putting in was repaired Tenth Avenue. And the fastest I put money in there on Tenth Avenue, it rains, but guess what? I went over there this week, I got more potholes spreading out.
It can.
And um I say now, the lady called me, I told her, I said, well, look, Ms., I have to address other streets because we keep putting money, putting money, putting money. So uh I had already had put in uh for Henry, for grant, so Henry told me today that he would apply for a grant for Tenth Avenue because ain't no more patches, ain't no more patch.
Okay, Councilwoman Benjamin.
I know, I can't attach that.
I got a few.
No, go down.
I got a few, hey, I gotta be at home with eight thirty.
You don't have a wife or children, Mr. President. You should be working on that. Okay, number twenty-six, filling the vacancy at municipal court, I think it's important, uh I think um uh attorney, uh Judge Hagedit is over there alone, if I'm not mistaken now.
Wait.
Does that, does that put him over there alone?
Yes.
Okay, so attorney, um, I mean Judge Hagedit is over there, we have a vacancy that needs to be filled, so as soon as possible.
We look at having a public safety, have a public safety meeting on Tuesday, take the interview process like we've done with everything else.
We left our students.
Uh and let's try to get one by the next council meeting.
Yeah, so you're gonna meet with public and safety.
Say the on Tuesday.
That won't be the interview?
No, no, that won't be the interview. We allow, we will allow uh any candidates to send their resume in and hopefully we can move through the process and have one uh selected by uh first meeting of the table.
Okay, I like to attend the, I wanna, I like to attend the interview, Ms. President. So when you get the date and time?
Yeah, Adam's done, so.
Let us know, let us know what that date and time is for that, so we can fill that vacancy.
Okay.
You know, the court is probably crazy over there by now. Um number twenty-seven, I, I came here forgetting that, I couldn't run back that to the copy, Ms. President, so if you will allow me.
Okay.
Cause I have attachment for that one right there, to to go with that one right there. And then work order, so work order requests, um they go down to the mayor's office and we should continue, uh we should continue to send those down, so I want, and I want our administrative assistant to be comfortable in doing that. Um um when I sent Tom down, I don't know if it was November or December, it was sent back to her, um saying, you know, council members, um they speak with department executives anyway, let them continue to do that, that's not the process. Um the process is, the work order request goes down to day-to-day operation and we all know who that is because it's announced all the time.
That's right.
So send that, uh continue to submit those, and I wanted to say that while we're here and it's being recorded so she can be comfortable and knowing the process. The process starts with us, we we give it to her or somebody calls in, whenever she gets the phone, they can call her, recreate the work order request, but the mayor executes and the mayor sends it to whatever department it belongs to and all we get is an update of whether it's completed or not and I wanted her to be comfortable with that.
What, no, I'm gonna read you, I'm gonna see if she can.
My person's the public.
Don't do that.
I did, I did, I did, I did. I think she.
I know y'all.
Am I leaving something out?
Uh, no.
But they said they asked you.
The few work order requests that I did send to mayor when everything was up and running, that is what prompted him to shut this system down two days later.
Oh, so you meant email.
Well, I emailed, yeah, cause once I emailed it to him, two days later I came back and to do some more and the internet was shut down, so I couldn't email him. And I don't feel comfortable emailing him from my personal email because he's not gonna um recognize it, you know, by it being my personal email, so I figured, once we created that to get it done, I have no problem with going down there ringing the door, but I would like to take him the word to make sure that he gets it. I don't think they would open the door, I would even go even a tad bit further and I would slide it under the door.
I would do the search out there more?
Well, I mean, that's actually duplicate more money for the city, but I would do that and I'll uh take a recording of myself taking it down and, you know, you know, we need to, I have.
That's just a problem, chief.
So, Councilmember, continue to to make your work order request, that's where they end up.
And then I'm done, Mr. President, the last two are.
Councilwoman Thomas.
I'll give you the date for the last two, I'm gonna.
Councilwoman Thomas.
Okay. What I've been doing is just contacting uh whoever I can in public works just to give them because they, I just been told to me that, no, I have not been getting work order requests, email.
We.
So I do just, you know, have someone that I will contact and say, hey, we got a work order request, I know the mayor's got sending it so far.
It is that name.
So kind, you know.
Yes.
Get it done, so.
Get more done.
The work order, the questions that go down because they're not sending it to me. I mean, they'll get them downstairs, but public works will never get them.
Major now. Before we.
Major now.
Welcome to your new job.
Is that illegal or is it a stringer, brother?
I just said major now.
I have a question.
I got a question.
I just didn't get the last part, work order is getting to one point and it's about that, not going anymore?
That was a tongue chip, that was just a beginning of the.
You know what I mean, but I did, I did wanna shout, heard it, but I heard it.
Oh, yes, yes, we heard it right.
If he's comfortable with me sending the work order request to the new attorney, he is a toy, I'm fine with it, that works for you all, I don't mind performing the work.
No, I.
That's for him so much. He's got a lot on his own.
It's not illegal, it's. Now, probably best learning.
Remember I said I would do anything this body asks me to do that's not illegal, immoral or unethical? That could probably squeeze in between a couple of those definitions, but it sounds more administrative.
It is, it is, I listen to tongue chip, but slide up on the door, keep your documentation.
Okay.
All right.
That's on first reading.
Yeah, but I'm still counting a few.
Yes, sir.
It's on first, second period, it's a.
What's that?
Kahava Road Liquor Store. And then on the second page, you got checked lounge, retail liquor license.
Is it two or one?
It's one.
I mean.
The address is one.
The alcohol beverage application, of course, too, this is gonna be a lounge. The alcohol beverage application, of course, too, this is gonna be a lounge. See, see where the, the second, third caption? Lounge retail liquor license.
That's a. Are you saying he applied for something different?
Well.
On one page?
Yeah.
This is a liquor store.
It's that mini.
It's Kahava Road Liquor Store.
Oh, same.
You don't have, uh, juice, it's being served in a store. But you got a lounge retail liquor license.
I'll give.
Something wrong with it.
How do you make it on the way to the?
I don't know, but we need to square it up before we move.
Tomorrow.
Yeah, he's saying that.
This is a leak matter.
And, um, I'm glad he brought that up, because, you know, I don't vote on them, but I did read this one. I see where the civil fire rescue, uh, Chief Graham sent a letter, um, saying some things need to be corrected. I see that this building inspector says they're in compliance. Um, and so I'm guessing they've done everything, but he didn't sign off on it at the bottom.
Chief, the fire chief?
Mr. Zebly.
At the bottom here says, all of the here-in state requirements have been satisfied by applicant, and I hereby certify that the business location is in full compliance with the fire codes necessary for this type of operation specified.
You're on the last page, councilwoman?
Mm-hmm. It's not signed down here. Um, and it doesn't address whether he complied with anything with the.
You got two different last pages.
Okay, so the fire chief has seven items, eight items, I'm sorry.
I'm trying to throw the police department.
Right, eight items saying that they're out of code. Zeb, the fire inspector says it's in code at one part, but didn't find out, sign off and say everything is fully in code. And I don't vote on them anymore, but that's something that we need to.
I don't even see the police department.
Oh, that's another one, I'm a little, what's your?
Police department.
I don't wanna make sure, I don't wanna make sure about club versus store.
Yeah, I just wanna make sure too, and also.
What's the, does anybody know the location?
Kahava Road, I mean, that mini mall. That little mini mall on.
Animal Church.
Yeah, that's where you. Yeah.
I think they got some.
They do, they, they.
They got another one on the next side building, but on.
Thanks to that, so they own ours.
Trying to camouflage.
Mm-hmm.
All right, councilwoman, councilwoman.
Yeah, I do, so I can get mine right quick.
Go ahead.
Okay, uh, I have something here tonight that, uh, Mr. Spencer has been, uh, brought through the, uh, planning, is that, uh, building?
Yeah.
Mm-hmm. And, um, he met with them, and he's trying to do a vacate right-of-way, um, over in his area by his property. So, um, they passed it, so what do the council need to vote to, uh, to allow him to do it? They, they, they passed it, all the other stuff on there for him.
I know they passed it, but once they pass it, uh, we'll let, we'll let our attorney.
Attorney, you wanna get?
Look at it and give us his advice.
He's right here, he's been waiting for a minute, he's been sitting on his side of this. Yes, Spencer, he's out there.
What was the petition that was?
The vacate property.
Is that the board, Councilwoman Jackson?
If I had seen, that's why I just asked you.
I'm just gonna ask you.
Because my first, they had, they had a meeting, and they passed it, planned it, they planned it out, they passed it. They got a meeting up here.
Use when he planned.
Councilwoman Jackson?
Oh, yeah. That's old, yeah. Look at that one.
It's getting, come, uh, I'm, I'm, it has to come to us, but I was surprised that.
Well, that's where Mr. Spencer.
They gave it to one council member, not a council member of the ward.
Yeah, uh, but Mr. Spencer, being, it's been in somebody else's hands, uh, and we, it, he been, remember he came up, he was talking to us about.
I remember, and I figured he would go to Councilwoman Jackson.
Well, his vacant stuff was in there on the desk.
I remember, he said it was lost somewhere in City Hall.
Yeah, so that's where it was at. On, back there, it was back there on, uh, on Cory Desk.
I mean, you gave it to me.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, you gave it to me.
That's where, that's where I just got it from.
So they didn't give it to the friends there?
That may have appeared that while it's been gone for two weeks.
Okay, okay.
And he didn't give it to the friends there?
And, and that's why, that's why I'm saying.
That explains.
It was back there.
Attorney Madison, he's scared, he's scared cops standing in the city. I'll be courting.
And that's why I brought, uh.
You just got one copy?
We have, we just got it, he's been looking for it, he's been waiting on us. Girl, people do everything around here.
Well, he knows what's there.
I was just, I could look at.
And I thought, I thought President Boyer told him that, he, he said it was on his desk.
He just ran it there when I was see, he just got it back there when I was see.
It just happened to him.
Make it there?
Yes.
Did you put it there?
Never.
Did you put it? Okay, so did you put that on his desk?
Yes.
Okay, so he wouldn't know, he wouldn't, he wouldn't have an idea.
But it got lost, and I'm gonna wait another two.
Okay, okay, so he wouldn't have an idea of that, okay, so yes, regardless, it has to come to council.
Yeah, and that's why I told him.
May I ask a question?
Mr. Ferris has vacated right-of-way forty feet, is that four zero feet? Okay, I wasn't sure with that.
Right, and, and it's supposed to, it's supposed to go right to your office.
But it's four zero feet?
Yes, sir. Uh, it's, it's on the, the right-of-way, we'll talk later.
I know it's separate, it's not, but I'd go over there and, and, uh, look, because I wasn't aware of it, and I didn't even know.
Your brain's some insight.
I will, it won't be tomorrow, I'll be, I live here tonight, I didn't know about it.
They had a meeting up here.
I didn't know.
Now, don't tell.
They lost his paper.
They had lost it, he brought his own copy.
Yeah, but.
But I mean, generally, if it's, uh, the council's. At least you're acknowledging.
Yeah, and I came to the meeting when someone's in my ward, they better let you know.
Okay.
Is there a big rush for this, Mr. Spencer?
Sir?
Is there a big rush for this?
Uh, I'm on three months, but, um, now, you have, now, you have a city attorney, give you the appropriate person advice.
Right, you know, I do want the council lady whose ward it is.
That's fine, that's fine, I thought many should advise that, because the planning already passed, so that might be planning's problem.
Oh, it is, it is.
A lack of communication, a lack of communication is universal around here.
Is it?
Yeah, fine now.
Okay, councilwoman.
I want to be a little longer, because I don't think this is something I can make sure of right now.
And you can follow with, uh, Mr. Reeves, the attorney.
I, I, I will.
And Councilwoman Jackson.
It'll probably have to be the next meeting, February.
I think that's a safe bet.
Be safe.
Well, I can't say that's an appropriate time, I mean, whatever you gotta do, whatever you gotta do. I think it make it easier on all the sign-on, I'm supposed to speak in, is that, quite honestly, it shouldn't be vacated. From my planning experience, it should be moved back onto the street, so moved back by ten feet, it's on my property. The, it takes over a gazebo and a wall, so we done researched on it, and nineteen eighty, they didn't have a right-of-way, when Mr. Strickland bought it and purchased it and built it. So really, we need to do is rather just move it back by, back into the.
This is a wall?
Yeah, it's over the wall, the right-of-way was in my property.
But you have a wall on the side.
Yes, the wall.
This has been brought to my attention already, I, I have not seen any of the speaker work, though.
Well, you just started, so it'll, it'll, it'll just basically go to your office and I'll wait for your.
Okay, councilwoman, three items.
Okay, my three item is dealing with the, uh, the, the, uh, the switch boxes. It bothered, um, you know, I did a lot of feedback about our lights. We have sat back like, and we said, here's twenty-twenty. And, uh, we hear, we, we, we see nothing that's taking action, uh, we bought, last year we bought ten boxes. And, uh, the citizens are looking for, for, for us to move on this. The lights are going out all over town, they flashing, they blanking, they falling down. And, uh, I tell them, we talk, we just repeating ourselves.
Who can, who can, who can contract to get them on?
And I asked him if I could, I have no problem, I'm retired, uh, if the man come here from Birmingham. He said that he would go in the areas, all of the areas that we need to put these boxes in, to control those lights, get those lights back to working. Uh, I know, I have him out, that all the lights are out. So if we could get those, uh, boxes, those lights back, uh, working, because I'm telling you, twenty-twenty.
Can, can we call him tomorrow?
Yeah, you can call him, maybe.
Call him tomorrow, set up a time, and move forward for that.
Okay, and, um, what about the, uh, the other lights? Uh, we know we need a lot of those traffic lights, they falling down, I, it's, we got one hanging off of, uh, what is that, uh, and I'm so afraid that it's gonna drop down, we getting more hard-wringing. It's on the corner of, what's it, Chestnut Boulevard and, uh, by the Animal Hospital.
Medical Center, which is Chestnut Boulevard and Church and Chestnut Boulevard and Lapsling Year.
So, uh, President Boyer, we got to do something about those lights. They, they, they hanging down, we got some serious problem that, uh, we've been talking, the people know, we've been talking, talking, talking. But then we allow, uh, our mayor, their, their operation to do something, and they not moving. So what is gonna take, uh, somebody in or get seriously hurt, or something bad for somebody to do something? Because this body, um, we've been talking about it, he just, we got to do it, we have to make a move on it.
Order.
We do need them.
Uh, Mr. President, if, if you don't, if you allow me to, I'll order, uh, those three lights, because they're not going to be, or I bring a quote back at the next meeting for those three.
We have a public safety meeting next two.
We need them.
Can you?
Just for those three lights now.
Can you use a separate way?
Because they're, they're not gonna be a part of the historic lights that we're looking at. Those are separate lights, and they're not.
Can you use a separate next two, we'll have a public safety meeting?
I, I, I would definitely try.
Okay, that's fine.
And my last item, the last item is.
City park.
Oh, yes, uh. Nah, he didn't.
You, you had them on.
Oh, oh, that, uh, with the, uh, the other lights that we had talked about, uh, we said that, uh.
It wasn't approved.
Wasn't approved, we, we not gonna get those lights.
We didn't say that, um, but, but it wasn't approved at the last meeting, because Councilwoman Benjamin asked for a separate quote. And so I sent everybody a copy of that separate quote for the thirty-eight hundred dollars per light, um, which is far, um, less, the thirty thousand dollar quote is far less than the six or three thousand dollar quote, and so, um.
The one you sent us is less?
Yes, the one I brought in last week is less. Last council meeting is less than the one I sent you by email.
So you had two quotes already?
I did have two quotes, I only brought one, because the other one was higher, but Councilwoman asked for a copy of that. And so I sent it out to the full council, like, the next day after the last council meeting, and say, hey, per Councilwoman Benjamin's request, I'm sending this to everyone, so he had an opportunity to look over it. He quoted us at thirty-eight hundred dollars per light, or eighteen lights.
Was that new?
Those are renovated.
That's the previous, that whole.
So we, we never get a quote for new lights?
For brand-new lights, I, I didn't think that's what you asked me, I thought you asked me.
If I didn't ask, I, I, I meant to ask that also, if I didn't ask that, I meant to ask that also, because.
And what source?
We don't have.
Pay that from, what source of funding from there?
The, we have forty thousand dollars in the budget for, um, lights, traffic lights.
We ain't had no lights in a long time.
We got forty thousand.
How many, what do you want?
Um, let me see, I think it's not gonna pay forty.
And while y'all looking at that, can you bring this up enough? Uh, President Boyer, I, I don't need to ask y'all to do this, do it, I had a gentleman, uh, uh, fell dead in my, in my area. But it's on city right-of-way, the problem, in front of their home. Uh, yes, I've been trying to figure out how could I do this? Uh, he thirsty, uh, on the corner of Deuce and Field Park. Uh, when it rains so bad, uh, the water comes from Lapsley, um, from Borton, and comes down Field Park. And right there on the corner where these, this family lives at, it's like a, a, a pool. And, uh, I was trying to figure out, uh, we could, we, uh, I would like to put some, uh, some rocks there to build up, because, uh, Thursday night, uh, um, Mr. Moore, uh, he was telling me about it, and his mother. His mother's ill, and they had to put on, uh, plastic, uh, uh, things around her foot to get her out the car, with so much water. And, uh, Thursday night, when he went home, um, before he went home, he asked me, will I fix that? And, uh, Thursday night, when he went home, some kind of way, um, he, he, he was getting, he blocked, he parked the car, and he was like, he probably was trying to go across the border, it was a lot of water there.
What you can do is just get a contractor.
Yeah.
Do a, do a, do a contractor, get a contractor, and let them go in and see how they can rectify that problem.
Yeah, he, he, they found.
That's what, that's what you probably can do, just get a contractor, and let them rectify it.
Okay, I just want to get it done.
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay.
How much is it now?
I'm gonna pay about twenty-nine thousand.
You'll be left.
No, I don't mean.
Yeah, oh, I can see.
How much is thirty?
Well, it's a thirty-six. Twenty-nine thousand, they used, about seven.
Um, Councilwoman Jackson?
Yes, yes, ma'am.
Is there nowhere we can get a quote for, um, and I'm, I'm asking this, because sometimes, um, it's better to buy something, than to try to, uh, redo something, and sometimes it's not.
Right, and, and I, I can look at the, the, um, buying all the new, new lights, um, but what we were looking at was the, um, and maybe we can't, the charm of those lights. I did have someone call and say that, um, they were in our area, and, um, water down by the old, they call, and said that someone was visiting, and took a picture of our lights, saying, I can't believe you all still have these, you know, old lights.
Yeah, they're talking about.
But they're historic lights, and we're one of the few, um, cities in the nation that still has.
Mm-hmm.
And so I, we were looking to try to preserve that and give, um, individuals yet another reason to trust the lights, even remove from this item, and it's placed on another public works amended.
Did you have a suggestion while they're looking at that, um, Ms. Wade, did you have a suggestion?
Yeah, I was just saying that, you, you know, I know, sometimes, just like with buildings, it costs just as much as to repair it, or they tear it and rebuild it over again. But if we possibly, it, depending on the cost, we could finance the project over five years, or something like that, to just do, revamp the whole city, um, lights over those areas that's critical. Then we may be able to do that at a cheaper rate than, you know, over five years.
And my last one, President Boyer, uh, Ms. Wade, did, did the man ever come for the leaking, where it's gonna cost us to get that fixed? Because we do not need to have, it's gonna rain Wednesday, we do not need to.
For the leaking?
Yeah, for the, this roof.
Um, our territory is tomorrow.
Yeah, because, uh.
It's coming next day?
Huh, yeah, and it's gonna rain, some more rain coming in, and we do not need, uh, we need, this do not look good, but us have a meeting and water, what the fuck?
Eighty? It's gonna rain, ain't on your head.
Okay, so tomorrow, let me go ahead and get it, get it up. The, uh, I'm gonna go through, uh, attorney to make sure we are in, on the right of course, as far as for no contract. We just have a contract for the consent agenda.
Yes, make sure my contract on it.
Yeah, that's, that's it, right, but I need to check that looking light. Oh, yeah, public hearing at four-thirty. Public hearing tomorrow, I sent, sent y'all the email.
Four-thirty.
Also.
Public hearing.
Yeah, four-thirty, for the renaming of the street, four-thirty here. Also, on Wednesday, uh, Doug Jones, someone from his office wants to meet with the council.
Twelve-thirty, right?
Twelve-thirty.
Doug Jones?
Yeah, well, someone from his staff, at twelve-thirty, I have it in my phone, I would be.
Well, I was told some of the tone to be here, but he.
I don't know, I would check, I, I, I received notice.
Unless you're gonna recess the set for that public hearing.
I don't know, oh, also another thing, too, uh, the lady get my nine stars, living. On Wednesday, at eight-thirty, uh, I talked with Mr. Joe Pease, Facilities Director of Sales at the school, they're having a meeting, and he asked me to be there eight-thirty, but I couldn't be there, but I said that I would ask Councilwoman Jackson and Councilwoman Benjamin, if you all could attend, because they're gonna talk about the bird school, and also the city park. That's when we, Wednesday, eight-thirty. No, 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 he called me, and I smell that, and I knew.
I'm trying to be there, of course, Mr. President. I wish they had let me know a long time.
Well, he just called me today.
Okay.
I know I wouldn't. Joe Peterson.
Do you know the, where the location?
It's gonna be at the, uh, school, uh, school board, yeah.
Mr. President, I heard what you, excuse me, I heard what you said about the right-of-way issue, what did you say about another public works or roads issue? Other than, I thought you said something other than, uh, Councilwoman Benjamin's contract?
I think you mentioned renaming of the street.
Oh, consent. He named it, I didn't show the consent agenda.
I didn't show the consent agenda, okay, okay. What's our, yeah, but yes, at eight thirty.
Councilwoman, um, these are our buildings, he, he's aware of, these are public buildings, yeah? Okay.
So you may, I know there's some questions that you, you both had, and I inquired about it. Councilwoman Thomas, you may need to be there, uh, eight thirty.
I was gonna say, if I can't make it, can you?
Eight thirty.
When, when say?
Yeah.
Yeah, I got something that I may be able to get out of.
Eight thirty at the, uh, school board, because I did inquire about it a while ago to follow all the questions y'all asked about. So they're supposed to have a meeting at eight thirty.